Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You'll note that Commissioner Beard is not here at this meeting. He is in Washington DC for the 169 Corridor Coalition, working on some transportation projects. So even though we will miss him from today's meeting, we're glad he's working on our behalf in DC. The agenda's been distributed. I've gotten word that we have one item on the agenda, item 7.3, that will be pulled and not discussed today. So are there any other amendments or additions to the agenda?
Madam Chair, I'll move the agenda then, as amended.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as amended. Any discussion? Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign? Motion carried. Thank you. The minutes of the June 4th, 2019 County Board Meeting have been distributed and posted on the website. Do we have any corrections or additions to those minutes?
Madam Chair, I'll move approval of the minutes.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the June 4th, 2019 County Board Meeting. Any further discussion or comments? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign? Motion carried. Thank you. Now, we're on to the part of our agenda where we recognize interested citizens. So if you're here to talk about an item that is not on the agenda, we invite you to come forward to the podium and address the board. Seeing no one, we'll move on to item five, which is our Scott County Delivers presentation today. Chris Harder will get us started to talk about Treatment Court. Welcome, everybody.
Hi. Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. We are pleased to welcome our Treatment Court team this morning. They were going to talk a little bit about their work over the past year and some of their work going forward. As you are very well aware, substance abuse has been a focus of a great deal of conversation across our organization as we look for how to serve people in the best way. This is certainly a kind of a bright spot of an innovative way to approach that work. We are going to deviate just a little bit from our normal process in respect for Judge Lennon's calendar and give her an opportunity to make some opening comments before she has to leave us. But first, if I could ask the panel members just to do a brief introduction and then ask you, and then Judge Lennon, I think, will hand it over to you.
Brad Davis, Planning and Resource Management Director.
Danielle Fox, Adult Social Services.
Jake Grusing, Library.
I'm Dr. Jennifer Shilt. I'm a psychologist on the Treatment Court Team.
Michelle Barley with the Public Defender's Office.
And I'm Chris Wilton. I'm one of the judges here in Scott County.
And I'm Carrie Lennon.
Betsy Nevis, the Treatment Court Probation Officer.
Heidi Casma, the Coordinator.
Oh, my brother, that director of Community Corrections.
Carrie Lorenz, I'm the supervisor.
I'm just sitting here.
Heidi, did you want to make some comments before Judge Lennon, or however you two decide to?
Sure.
I know you were going to do the overview piece.
Yeah, and then I'll just open up to her after that. So first, we just want to thank you guys very much. Obviously, without your support, we would not have this program in place today. You guys have been very supportive in our efforts and continue to be, so we just want to thank you for that. We've really enjoyed this program and hope that from today, you can kind of see some of the efforts and work that we're making with these participants. Yesterday, we just celebrated our 12th graduation in the program. So we've had 12 graduates since July 2018. We're coming up on our year mark. So with that, we'll be starting to be able to track recidivism with our graduates and looking at how well they're doing post-graduation with sobriety and remaining law-abiding. We're really proud of the collaboration we've had with other agencies, the Mental Health Center, law enforcement, working with treatment agencies in our community, as well as the CAP Agency. We really try to utilize CAP as a site for community work service, so participants are giving back directly to Scott County. So that's a big effort we've been trying to make. Law enforcement, they have done over 1,900 curfew checks on our participants, and just the relationship building with that has been really impressive to see, both with participants being able to see law enforcement as a support, and law enforcement seeing that these clients are changing and making the efforts has been a positive. So data, we've collected a lot of that for you today. A lot of the data we're presenting on is aligning with best practices on what we should be doing and the goals we should be hitting in order to be a successful program. So hopefully, you can see that with the data we're presenting. Along with moving forward, like I mentioned, we're going to start tracking the recidivism and the sobriety for our graduates to see how they're doing. We all just attended, and we're joined with the team. A couple weeks old, the state had a Treatment Court Conference where we learned kind of updated practices, different trainings on working with these participants. So we're actually going to be meeting the end of July to kind of go over that information, incorporate, make sure we're aligning with that. Also, we're going to be looking at our policy and procedure manual. With our grant ending in September, we'll be able to kind of have some more options on possibly who we take in and criteria, because a lot of our stuff was driven by the BGA grant. So with that, anyway, we might have more flexibility in who we serve. So those are some areas we're going to be looking at moving forward.
Thank you. Judge Lennon.
All right. Well, as the newest member of our Treatment Court Team, I come in with a little bit fresher eyes. This is such a different experience for a judge because we're being so collaborative and praising people rather than punishing. Well, we do some punishing as well, but it's a different role for me, and it's really been a great role because we see people actually changing, and we see the improvement we're making, not only in these individuals' lives, but for their families and for the community. And some of them are just small steps where we find we're getting people so that they have a driver's license, so they're not driving uninsured and without a valid license. We have them in stable housing so that they're not homeless, and they're not stealing, and they're not having to be a burden to our system. And we find that as these incremental steps occur, they're becoming productive people in your communities. And we see that coming back at these graduations, when these family members come in and say, "Oh, my gosh, we never thought this would happen." And so we're getting this incredibly positive feedback from people in the community. The law enforcement officers that come in are the ones that kill me. The last time you see somebody in full uniform hug a kid that was a drug addict in the biggest nightmare of their community is so rewarding because you see not only that we've changed this individual's lives, but we've helped change kind of the attitude toward law enforcement and about understanding that these kids can have, and I say kids, I call them all kids because they're so much younger than me, but they're young adults, and they really are making a change. I think the support of the board here has been pivotal to us being successful, and it has been so great to see some of you at our graduations and to try to get a sense of the real people that we're dealing with. It is a goal of our program and of our process that we are improving lives for people, and I think that's really what we're doing here. Unfortunately, I have a courtroom full of people who are not managing their lives quite as well, and so I am going to excuse myself, but I will thank you very much for your support and hope that it continues.
Thank you, Judge.
Thanks.
All right. Can we turn to the panel for questions then?
Can you talk a little bit about those partnerships? So I know one of the things that's made this program so successful is those partnerships in Scott County. Have you, as you've grown the program, been able to expand those partnerships outside of Scott County? Are you connecting to other specialty courts across the state or picking up on best practices? And is the fact that, I mean, I think we see people transient come through the system, right? And I believe our jail is over 50% non-Scott County individual. So how does that impact your work and sort of that scope of partnerships? Well, as far as branching out more, so I am on a board with other coordinators from other counties. So we utilize each other a lot for ideas on who you're partnering with, how can we branch out? As far as the jail piece, our focus is to serve the Scott County residents, so we're not necessarily looking at branching out outside of Scott County and we're utilizing what we have within the county. Law enforcement has been, you know, key with that is a partnership. Not only have they been support with the curfew checks, but they've offered people, you know, rights to UAs. They've helped people get employment and things like that. So I think a lot of it is utilizing the people that we have on our team. Even the Mental Health Center, we have, we're very fortunate because not many teams have mental health on their team, and that's branched out to being able to use the Mental Health Center to run like cognitive skills groups for our participants, kind of trying to utilize Scott County for the therapy and just kind of have people be able to use the services that are here because this is where they reside. It's what's easier for them to get to. So we're more focused on utilizing what we have in here versus branching out too far out.
And if there are individuals who aren't Scott County residents, are there opportunities for them to connect to a similar service in their community, or are we?
Yes and no. So some counties will allow to take other participants that have Scott County offense into their program. So we will, if I know of courts that are open to that, I can notify that coordinator. So some counties take those participants, but not, unfortunately, all counties take transfer cases into their programs. But it's still depending on if they're in custody. I also do reentry stuff, but that also serves just Scott County people, but I can give people ideas on who they could connect with for like chemical dependency or things like that while they're in custody.
Question on page eight. It seems like this is such a life-changing experience, so that acceptance is so important. So this data really kind of struck me as the acceptance rates. And one question I had is that waitlist. What's the process of getting off the waitlist, or how do you get on the waitlist to begin with?
Yeah, so for probably a six-month period, we were at full capacity. So each year, how we set up the program, year one, we had it for 25, just so we could kind of get our feet wet, kind of get used to how this works. Year two, we expanded it to 30 participants, and then in our third year, we were up to 35, which will kind of be our high cap. And so during a period last year, we did have a waitlist. So how you got on that is when we were at full capacity, and I got a referral either from an attorney, a judge, or any source, I would still screen the client to make sure that met initial eligibility, and then I would explain to them that we did have a waitlist at the time. How they would get on that is they met the eligibility, and we would have had a spot for them. I would have put them on the waitlist. And then if we would have had a graduation termination, somebody opt out or an opening, then I would reach out to them. If their case was not resolved yet, then they would still be eligible. Unfortunately, for some people, if they resolved their case, or if they went on warrant status or had issues and weren't available, then they would lose their spot and would go down to the next one.
And you mentioned earlier that the grant maybe really established the eligibility criteria. So how could that change in the future if we?
So one of the big drivers from the grant was certain criteria we have to follow as far as criminal history or current offenses. With the federal grant, you're not allowed to take any violent offenses, and then we can kind of look at that criteria and determine what we see as a violent offense or not. So we'll probably be working closely with the judge's county attorney's office and public defender's office on that criteria.
Can you talk about those denial reasons where it talks about the county attorney denied, and what does that look like? Does that fall into some of these categories, or are there other components that?
Yes and no.
No good.
So county attorney, when we developed this program, majority of programs, because we offer participants a stay of adjudication, which would mean if they successfully got through this program, the offense they're pending would be dismissed from their record. So since that's such a huge legal piece, the county attorney's office is kind of what we would call the gatekeeper on whether they would agree to give someone that type of stay on their offense or not. So that's why you'll see that they can deny people. Certain offenses, they weren't in agreement to offer stay of adjudication. And then some other pieces that, you know, went into play, law enforcement helps screen all of our participants do. So sometimes we might get information that we're not privy to that has affected the county attorney's ability to let somebody in the program.
And I was going to say essentially the same thing. They have the right of first refusal, and they don't have to tell us why, or where, or when. And as Heidi said, there are a lot of times where there potentially are ongoing investigations that we're not privy to and shouldn't be privy to. And so Mr. Hosevar, at that point, through Bryce Irman, our county attorney, can simply say, "No, thank you," and discussion ends right there.
Can I ask you, Judge, or maybe Michelle, for those folks who elect not to participate, not necessarily county attorney decision, but for those who elect not to participate, what do we know about those folks?
The people that are choosing not to come into the program?
Yeah.
It's a hard program. I tell people all the time that if you want to make a change in your life, it's not going to be easy. It's not a quick fix. And for a lot of people, they're just not ready yet, and they would rather literally go do their a year and a day in prison, which is actually about eight months, and if they've served some time, it's four or five months, and get out and continue their lifestyle rather than spend 16, 18, 22 months with us. It, you know, I try to be real honest with them upfront because it, I tell people all the time, you have police at your door at 10 o'clock every night, you have to come see me every other week. Betsy goes to their house unannounced, they take UAs three to seven times a week. I mean, we are on them, and for some people, they're just not ready yet. And even for some people that get into our program, you know, what they hear initially is, for a lot of our people, it's, "This is my chance to stay out of prison." And that's okay with me if they walk in saying, "The only reason I'm in drug court is to stay out of prison," because eventually, for most of them, we see at six, eight, 10, 15 months, we stop talking about prison, and we have them say, "For the first time, I talked to my dad." We had a participant yesterday that said, "For the first time in two years, I picked up the phone on Father's Day, and I called my dad. And I said, 'Were you nervous about it? Were you excited?'" He said, "Well, first, it took me all day to make the phone call. And second," he said, "When I called twice, I thought he blocked me because the phone went right to just kind of dead." He said, "So I figured he blocked me. And so I called my mom, little did I know that his dad had changed his phone number." And so he made the phone call and talked to his dad for the first time in two years. So, and he was one to begin with, he just wanted to avoid prison. And I think he has 220 to 240 days of sobriety. It's an amazing thing of what happens. And so most come in saying, "Yes, I want to change my life, but number one, I want to stay out of prison." By the year mark, 15 months in, that mantra's changed. They don't even talk about prison anymore. It's more about, "Look at what I'm gaining back." And so it's not for everybody. And there are people that we terminate from Treatment Court because they're not ready, or they violated, or it's just a way to stay out of prison, and they're not willing to change their life.
I think also, when you are a line attorney, like a line defense attorney, and you're visiting with someone who's just gotten arrested, I mean, you've got to understand the state of mind that they're also in. So I mean, their addiction drives their behavior at that point, and they're not really even thinking big picture. They want to get out of jail. That is their only goal, and whatever can accomplish getting out of custody the fastest with the least amount of trouble or burden for them, that's kind of their tunnel vision at the time. And so I think that's also a part of what goes into, you know, us as the public defenders, being able to approach them about, you know, "Do you want to stay sober for the rest of your life? We have this program." You know, another big piece of it is that you have a lot of out-of-county residents who are committing crimes in here. So we have, we can't even offer it to those. Or if they're homeless and bouncing here and there, we can't prove enough residents' criteria to make them eligible for the program either. So.
So is it fair to say from your comments that there aren't any system barriers to bring in people who might be good referrals, who the county attorney's office might support, but if that people are opting out, that's a personal piece and not a system issue?
I would say definitely. And, you know, we'll be three years in October, and so for the first year, I would tell you that the word still wasn't out. But we've had 12 graduates. We've had three years. All the public defenders, all the private counsel that come into Scott County know that we have a Treatment Court. And, you know, for a lot of them, it is, you have a gun conviction, and so you're not eligible. You have a criminal sexual conduct conviction, so you're not eligible, or you don't have ties to Scott County.
Or felony assault from 10 years ago.
Right. I mean, because of the federal guidelines, we have to be very careful and mandated as to what we'll take and what we won't take. And, you know, that is a collaboration of what the judges are comfortable with, what the county attorney's comfortable with, frankly, what Betsy's comfortable with, because, you know, while all of us go home and go to bed, she's the one that has to go to these people's houses at 10 o'clock at night or 8 o'clock at night and make those visits. And so, you know, it's safety, and it's the kind of participant that we want in our program. And we're tracking down the highest risk, the highest need people to try to make those changes. And in fact, you know, when police officers give their input and they say, "Don't waste your time on this person because they'll never amount to anything, and I've seen them on the streets for seven years, and they're garbage because they spit at me, and they swear at me, and they run from me," those are the people that we're excited to get into our program because those are the ones that we know that we can make a change in.
Thank you.
At almost three years in, are there things that surprised you about the process recently, and are there opportunities that you see to sort of expand or grow your efforts?
I think I'm surprised often at Treatment Court, and Judge Lennon talked a little bit about it. We had an officer from Belle Plaine yesterday, our graduation, and we had a young man who spent almost 600 days in our program. And this officer from Belle Plaine stood up and said, "You know, when you came to Belle Plaine, we had a meeting about you, and we didn't want you in our community. We were worried about what you were bringing in with you. We were worried about your activities. We knew that you were into bad things, and so we were going to watch you close." He said, "You've gone through Treatment Court. You've changed your life. You were always respectful during all the curfew checks." I think he had 120 or 140 curfew checks, and the officers got to know you and enjoy talking to you. And he said, "Now, we had a meeting at our apartment, and we want you to know this message. We hope you stay in our community, that you are an upstanding citizen, and you are the kind of people that we want in the county here and the city of Belle Plaine." And so to hear a police officer stand up and tell somebody that is always surprising to me because, you know, the police have a job, and it's generally to arrest people and do investigations. You never see the other side of that, where they look and say, "We're happy to now have some of these people." And look, he did it. He did it. I mean, he's the one that went through all the programming and all the rest. And so for that relationship to have occurred and to have the Belle Plaine Police Department recognize something like that and have him recognize that the police think that way of him, it's always surprising to me. You know, it's surprising to me that somebody stood up yesterday and said, "I haven't talked to my dad in two years." I talk to my dad a number of times a week. And so those things that we take for granted, not everybody does. And so it's amazing to me, the reconnection with their families, with jobs, just those personal stories are not only fantastic, but they're also always surprising to me about how far people get themselves in and away from their families and how low they go before they dig themselves back up.
I think what's surprising to me is we, as a team, are still learning so much. I mean, this whole program has been a process for all of us to try to do what's going to help the participants the best. So you go to a training, and then it's months, and then, you know, you're doing your job every week, and then sometimes you kind of go back to your old, we go back to our old way of thinking. Then we have a training, and it kind of refreshes that, okay, you know, we should be looking at this or that. But I'm always surprised at how much I don't know. Like, at the Treatment Court Conference last week, I mean, there's just so much information that's so valuable for us to know and be aware of as we're helping them through this process.
And then to answer in your area for growth, we are hoping and we're going to look into if we can incorporate peer recovery services into our program. So with just learning, we need to find a way to connect people to recovery long-term. We can only be with them for the 14, 20, whatever months they're in our program. For them to be successful long-term, they need to be connected in community supports, family supports, and this peer recovery service could be a great help in that. It would help connect people to recovery meetings in their community. It can bring in meetings to the area if need be. It can just help people find sponsors. Peer recovery coaches are people that are in recovery themselves, long-term recovery, and have been trained and working with other people in recovery. So it's great for them to have someone that they connect with that's been through experiences they have. So that's a big piece that we're hoping to be able to incorporate into our program coming up.
Heidi, doesn't Wright County have a peer specialist right on their team even?
I believe Wright County does, and then like Rimes, you can have the peer recovery services through Minnesota Recovery Connection.
So peer recovery, to me, sounds like potentially a formal support after people graduate from the program, but what Judge Wilton described to me seems like a more informal. To have the police department in your community say, "We want you here now," that, to me, would increase the likelihood of long-term stability and success for that individual. Are there other, maybe less formal supports, that you would want to see in place from a community perspective to help ensure the long-term stability and success of your graduates? You've gone through all that, you know, 18 to 24 months with them. What needs to be in place once they leave?
Well, I think the peer recovery. The other thing is that, once they graduate, we see them at two months, we see them at six months, we continue to see them, we space them out. And so it's not a parachute, you're out of the plane, and there's no parachute, and we hope you do well. Statistically, we know that for a lot of people, once they graduate, they're at high risk again because all of those, all of that structure is now gone. It's like your kids, when they go to school, and they're in that great routine, and then summer comes, and it all breaks loose, and there's no, you know, it's kind of chaos because there's no structure. I think also that our participants informally try to rely on each other, too, and so they form bonds, potentially sober bonds. The other piece of it is, is we push hard for the AA and NA or those kind of support networks. We push them to make sure they have a sponsor. And so the idea is, it's almost like raising children, right? You raise them to leave your house, and then you give them the best that you can give them, teach them everything you can, and then you have to let them go. But we try to put all those supports in place so when they're not coming to court anymore, they don't have to see Betsy anymore, they have all of those things. They have all the tools they need to ensure that if they do relapse one time, that it doesn't slide. And that's the interesting thing about drug addiction is there are so many different levels, and a lot of times when our people use once, then they go into full-blown addiction again, and they stop calling their families, they lose their job, they start stealing things. The idea is, is if they do relapse, do they have all the tools passed us to say, "Okay, it's one, I relapsed. Now I know what I need to do. I need to get back into an outpatient treatment. I need to reconnect with my sponsor. I need to do X, Y, and Z." So I think informally and formally, you know, we're trying to set them up, obviously, for success, and we know that they're with us just a small portion of their life and sobriety. So the important part is, is to make sure that all those things are set up, and that's how you move our phases, our levels. You have to have a sponsor. You have to engage in pro-social activities that are sober so that you retrain and relearn how to make sure that you can do that without chemicals.
And that is, to piggyback on that, a piece of the peer recovery. So it's a formal organization, Minnesota Recovery Connection, but their goal is to connect you to those informal supports, because they're not going to be with them long-term either. So it's really about teaching them the coping skills, where they can go in their community, whether it's building on the family support. So they look at that holistically, and they help connect them to those pieces, too. We would just be utilizing a formal organization to help us drive that piece.
I think a big part, too, and I don't know whether it's a formal or informal, is ensuring that the community has affordable housing for convicted felons. So some of these people, although we, the charge that they're coming through court, may be dismissed at the end of completion, they may have prior records that prevent them from subsidized housing. And so, I mean, the thing that I continue to see is we've got participants living with somebody who's with how many roommates? So although it's stable housing for them, it still is not like their own place, and there's a definite lack of affordable housing for people with criminal histories in the community.
One question I had, as I looked through all the data and the charts and graphs and the packet, is how do we compare to other treatment courts, either in Minnesota or nationwide? So have you been able to kind of start looking at other treatment courts? So, have you been able to kind of start looking at other treatment courts and, and thinking about how we're comparing to them or to any kind of benchmarks or standards?
Well, let me, let me just take this real quick. It's a funny thing when you don't know, Heidi's been involved in treatment courts for how long?
Seven plus years.
Okay. I started three years ago at the ground level in this. And I've gone to meetings with other treatment court judges. And if you were sitting in most counties and, and you were conducting this, there would only be one of them at this table. She would not be here. She would not be here. There'd be one judge, one prosecutor, no defense attorney, a coordinator slash community corrections person. None of these people would be here and this would be your team. There'd be no police officers involved and literally we'd be running this thing with three of us with no law enforcement help, with no psychological help, with no PD. Can you imagine as a, as a treatment court where you don't have representation, where we're not checking out your mental health and trying to treat your whole person, where we don't really care about your housing, where we've got nobody to do curfew checks, and where we have 25 people with one coordinator probation officer trying to do everything? So, I will tell you that when I sit at meetings with other judges and we talk about what all of us have and don't have, and they say, "Well, do you have a defense attorney?" And I say, "Yes, we have one of the best defense attorneys you could ask for." And, "Oh, by the way, we have a psychologist." And, "Oh, by the way, we have chemical dependency counselors." And we have our own coordinator and our own full-time probation officer and, and, and. And then I end with, and we have the support of our commissioners. They all look at me and say the same thing. "How'd you get all that? Like, what did you do to make sure that you have all that?" And I said, and I say, "We got lucky. We have people that care." And not that the other counties don't care, but, you know, a lot of county boards will look and say, "Treatment Court sounds great, but we're not giving you a dime." And yeah, mental health's important, but we don't have the resources. Public defenders will say, "We're overburdened. We don't have enough money." So, you don't get a PD. And so, we are so fortunate that our county board looked at this three years ago, we were putting this together, and not only said, "You can have a treatment court, but it's got to be bare bones," they said, "What do you need to make this successful? How are we actually gonna not just say, 'Look how great we are, we started a treatment court,' but how are we gonna actually make a difference?" And other than Ramsey and Henepin, which have a lot of resources and a lot of people, I would put our treatment court up against anybody in the state of Minnesota. And I tell you that because, again, people always call and say, "How did you get all these things?" It, the collaboration that we have with many different interests, from probation to judges to prosecutors to defense attorneys, you won't find another time when all of us sit at the same table. We have such divergent jobs and focuses and yet we sit all at a round table at noon on Mondays and talk about our participants and look at what is best for them. We all have our own roles, but the goal is the same. And, and our 12 graduates and the people that we have in our program are truly the beneficiaries. And, you know, as Michelle and as Heidi talked a little bit about, when you see these families who believe that they had lost their sons and daughters, only to get them back through our program, if you ask them what this is worth, obviously, they would tell you it's priceless. Heidi, in terms of statistics?
Yep. So, right now, we do have, we're in the process of an evaluation. So, we do have a hired evaluator that's going to be looking at how we've done in the first three years. Unfortunately, some of the recidivism and that stuff won't come for a little bit later. So, then we can compare that. Most courts will do an evaluation. Like Henepin County has an evaluation out on their program and we can kind of compare to their statistics. And then there's also national standards that you want to hit. The National Association of Drug Court Professionals puts out kind of standards where if you're a successful program, here's kind of the benchmarks you should be hitting. So, we'll be able to see that hopefully when our evaluation is done and then we'll kind of continue to evaluate our program and data to make sure we're kind of aligning with that stuff. The state as well, they typically do an evaluation on all the state drug courts and kind of put out that information as well that we can compare ourselves to.
So, will that be available the next time you do Scott County delivers?
Our evaluation? Yep, ours will be. Hopefully, I think it's supposed to be done May?
By May.
By May of 2020, so.
Can I go to the, the dark side for just a second? So, two things I wanted to ask. One is, relapse is a part of recovery. And so, I know as we were kind of preparing for this, Scott County delivers, there were some conversations about planning for what happens if people post-graduation relapse and like what, what is the best right system response to those folks? And I'm just wondering if you have things you could share about what your thought is now that you have a number of people who have graduated?
Yeah. So, that is part of the reason we designed the check-in process. So, after they graduate, we're still kind of connected with them for six months. They're still doing UAs, meeting with probation, coming to check in with the court, things like that. And then we'll be formally sitting down at a retreat in July and developing a relapse program or track and seeing how we can incorporate that. How can we serve people that relapse kind of within that timeframe? So, we'll hopefully have a more outlined and how we're going to address that if that were to happen. Because the tricky part is, since we are voluntary, how we can kind of get them back in or things like that, so.
And out of our 12 graduates so far, one who's graduated now is plus one day is all. We've only had one person so far that I know of that has, that has relapsed. And they turned right around and got ahold of us to say, "What can we do?"
Nice.
So, you know, it, and, and as Michelle said, we're still learning. This is, you know, it, even though there are other treatment courts, every treatment court is so different. And so, maybe we're not inventing the wheel. We've got an outline of the wheel, but we're sure putting all the spokes in and trying to figure out where they belong and how it's going to roll the best and, and how we're supposed to do what we're doing. And so, as Heidi said, you know, the retreats are, are so important. We went to a national conference in Texas last summer. It, it's unlike most conferences I've gone to because there are actually great ideas being shared. You know, a lot of these, you go to these conferences and you name it and you think, "Okay, let's go see the sites." And the Texas conference was amazing. They had amazing speakers. They pay these people money to come in and talk about best practices and they give you ideas. And I'll give you an example. Up until the Texas conference, I sat on my bench and I made them come around and stand at the podium and it'd be one-on-one, me up here, them down here. And so, I went to the Texas conference and watched videos of judges doing their job, standing at the same level and getting off the bench and being close and having conversations and moving around. And so, immediately when I came back, that's the first thing I did. And the participants, of course, thought, "Okay, that's, that's weird. I've never seen a judge." But I'm like, "Okay." But now, I'll tell you, if I sat back up on the bench, they would think that was weird. And it, so it gives me a different viewpoint and allows me to get within five feet and make direct eye contact instead of me talking down to them, more on this level. And, you know, we tweaked a lot of things coming out of Texas and I, my guess is, we'll tweak, tweak a lot of things coming out of our Minnesota conference here in July. All right. So, that's number one on the dark side. Was there a second?
Well, this, this is about jail, which might be a bright side. So, I should maybe know this, but do we know how much it costs? I'm looking at page seven. Do we know how much it costs to spend a day in jail?
Yeah. So, the average is $148.05.
$148.05?
Yep.
So, so the reduction of?
It's a $374,122 savings.
Thank you.
So, right now, we're averaging about 33% less jail time per participant.
Thanks, Heidi. That wasn't the dark side.
That's the light side.
Can we go to page 10 for a moment? We're looking at our local participant demographics. It looks like it's maybe 95 or 96% white if we're looking at it by race. And thinking about Judge Wilton mentioning the Texas conference and sort of national best practices and national research, are there, is there research out there about participation disparities by demographic group and then maybe further down the line, outcome disparities by demographic group? And just do you, is that, is that out there and what, what is your response to that?
I don't know if that, that information is necessarily out there. I think Heidi could probably address that better. I mean, I think the system as a whole, there's disparity in race. Mr. Irwin and I actually were, before we even got the chart, I'd say about a month ago, he and I were chatting about the fact that we don't have a lot of variety in the people that we're taking into the program. And he and I were talking about how can we improve that? Because we know that demographics of our treatment program do not fit the demographics of the county. And they should. So, that, to me, that's a huge issue. And one that the prosecutor and I have discussed recently and we're trying to collaborate on how to address that.
And diversity does matter. It, it makes everybody more well-rounded and we want to ensure that regardless of your gender or race or religion or you ought to be in the treatment court program if you want. I will tell you that in terms of these statistics, there are at least two other individuals who are Medawakken and Sue that we now have in our program, which is, I'm proud of because they, they have their own treatment court, wellness court. And those, at least one of those young women went through that, didn't do so well, and now she was back in front of me yesterday and, and back into our court. And she's 22 or 23 years old, is that right? And seven and a half months pregnant. And so, heroin user, and so, her conservator and guardian from the tribe have pushed her into our treatment court program because they've sat and watched for a couple of years to see what we've done. We, we have to get better, but it's one of those things that we can only take people that apply to us. And so, it's incumbent on us to ensure that we're at least getting the word out and pushing to get individuals with more diverse backgrounds into our treatment court. There, there are things, at least as of till October, that we can't change. So, if somebody comes in and they're white, African-American, Native American, doesn't matter what they are, if they have a gun crime, they're not eligible. Criminal sexual conduct, not eligible. And so, there's a long list of, of crimes that simply make people ineligible. We may have more flexibility, as Heidi said, coming up to figure out on a more individual basis. But what Heidi's done an excellent job at is, is making sure that we take the subjective out of it. And so, we objectively are going down, whether that means, "Are you a Scott County resident?" You'd think that was, that would be an easy answer and it's so complicated because they used to be, they graduated high school here, but they haven't lived here, but their mom does and they stay with their mom three days a week when they're not using, but when they are using, they can't stay in Scott County. Are they a resident or not? Should they come into our treatment court or not? And so, we are trying to become more objective to take that subjectivity out of who gets into our program. And so, we're more transparent. We, we want to be able to show everybody, this is who we take in, this is who we don't take in, and we, we don't take you in, this is why. So, we, we definitely have to get better at that.
And I think that's why Bryce and I were chatting because there's not a lot of diversity in the public defender's office. There's not a lot of diversity in the prosecutor's office. And all of us have implicit bias. As public defenders, we've taken the implicit bias task, just to make us aware of how much implicit bias we actually have. And so, that's something that I think Bryce and I need to work with because we make a lot of referrals, our team members, our, our staff do. And we need to make them realize that, you know, you need to open your eyes, we need to make sure we're including everybody, so.
And then just to comment too, with this data, for whatever reason, that was only capturing our current participants as of April 30th, 2019, when we submitted this data. It wasn't looking at everybody we've accepted. When we pulled that data together, it did align a little better with the county demographics because some of our past graduates were from diverse backgrounds. I sent that to my director, but I apologize, I didn't write down where we were fitting with our county demographics, but we weren't crazy far off on who we've accepted overall.
On page nine, it talks about the percent of people accepted into treatment court within 50 days. I'm just wondering, from your perspective, what impacts this? And then also, where are people with, before those 50 days or where are they, when they're waiting? Are they getting services from the mental health center? Do they have access to other services?
So, this 50-day goal, this is a national standard. So, they talk about if you get people engaged with your program within 50 days of arrest, they're more likely to get engaged and be with your program long-term. When you kind of let it go out after 50 days, some people get services in place or they go on warrant status or they think, "Oh, I'm doing fine. I don't need your program." So, that's where the goal of 50 days comes in. A lot of times when we see after the 50 days, we try to get people engaged in services right away. So, as soon as we find people are eligible, they're willing to come into our program, we put them on what's called pre-treatment court conditions and that allows us to start doing UAs, get services in place. So, some of these participants will go off to a residential treatment program and that delays their ability to get back to court to get accepted because we don't obviously want to interrupt that treatment program. And if they go out of county, transportation to get back is sometimes harder. So, that's sometimes where we'll pass our 50-day mark. So, that's why we're really trying to make sure we're getting people accepted. But yes, we do try to get them services with treatment. There are certain things we can't get them connected with. We can unfortunately get the diagnostic through the mental health center until they're accepted because of the funds that we're given from the county. We want to make sure it's people that are going to be in our program and that we're not spending funds on people that aren't going to be eligible or able to come into our program. So, we'll try to get certain services we can, like treatment, coming to court, meeting with probation, and then other services, we have to wait till after they're accepted to engage them further into those.
Bryce, if I can add, you know, when you do an assessment and then you're trying to find a residential program that's going to fit their needs, those programs may have a two, three, four-week waitlist. So, right there, that's, you know, 14 to 28 days into that 50 days that, you know, because it's kind of difficult finding residential beds these days.
And I can say on the mental health side, what is really nice is that as soon as people are in, we can move pretty quickly because that's literally what I'm devoted to doing. So, we don't, in other cases where someone would have to be on a waiting list to get a diagnostic assessment, I can go right in. And we had a participant that actually was really nice. We had Tim Grohl from the Haven was doing an assessment, had concerns about the client, said that, you know, "It looks like he's having some suicidal thoughts." I met with him in court that day. We initially had planned to do the DA a couple of weeks out when he came back, but because of what was happening, we moved it up to within two days and we had him in therapy, I think, by the next, I think it was the next week. So, that's been really nice, yeah.
And this is a hard number to, to meet.
From our perspective.
From everybody's perspective, right? I mean, somebody gets arrested, it takes the prosecution a while to get a complaint out and to get all the police reports, get all the discovery over to the defense attorney so they can review it to determine whether or not this person should be into treatment court, whether that's, it makes sense for them. Once they say yes, then we have to get a chemical dependency evaluation completed, which takes potentially a couple of days. They have to get ahold of collaterals to make sure they're telling the truth and kind of what's happening. And then, once the referral comes, I mean, it is, we spent, in about the last six weeks, we struggled because everything was full. And there were waiting lists that were three, four, five, six weeks long to be able to get somebody in to get to treatment. And so, even if we're moving very quickly, that bed availability piece kills us. And there are only so many treatment centers and there are so many people that need the help that we become kind of beholden to that piece. And even though we work hard at this number and we're getting better, if there's not a treatment bed available, there's nowhere to put them and so, it makes it more difficult.
Betsy, I want to learn a little bit more about your role. I've heard a little bit, but I'd like to just learn a little, a little bit more. And then, what data is important to you for your job when you look at the work that you do? What data do you track and think is important? think is important?
Sure. So my role is, once they're on pre-treatment court conditions or treatment court conditions, I help get a lot of the services set up. So I'm talking to the assessors, the treatment programs, helping with transportation, oftentimes driving them to treatment, coordinating with their family to get their belongings in, you know, to them. So at the beginning, it's a lot of the getting the coordinating, getting everything organized. And then it's collaborating with the treatment programs, getting referrals to Dr. Schultz, checking in with therapists to make sure they're going to therapy. I don't ever need to know what they're talking about there, that's not my business, but that they're following through with services and really gathering the information. Every week, I send out updates to the law enforcement officers. So we work with every jurisdiction in Scott County to let them know who's there that week, what their curfew is, because it changes as they move phases, if they might be approved for a weekend away with their family or something like that. Then the law enforcement, we get those notes on if they were compliant with curfew or not compliant with curfew, if they noticed anything's going on, they have concerns about use. They let us know, they let me know if, like, who they're hanging out with, who they shouldn't be hanging out with, things like that. So I really gather all this information. Every week, when we sit down for staffing, every Monday morning, I send out a sheet on each participant with pretty much a brief summary of that information, if there are sanctions that we need to address, missed UAs, positive UAs, if they missed treatment, if they missed curfew. I make recommendations for sanctions based off of their history and the program and things like that. So that's, basically, I gather information and talk to a lot of people. I check in with their families, I go out to their house. I met with quite a few of their employee, employers. One of the things, going back to another question, what surprises me is, we have so many employers in Scott County that are more than happy to give people chances, and they like to meet probation, and they will come to court and they'll come to graduation. So I'm out there meeting with people and just checking in with people, which gives people, you know, the participants motivation to, to do better. As far as stats, I don't know that I, we do a risk assessment that I update every year that shows risk and stuff like that, but I don't, I don't really have to deal with numbers.
She's too busy to care about that.
Luckily, math isn't my strong suit either. So I don't, like, all, all this is interesting to me, looking at it, but it doesn't really impact my, my day-to-day job. I mean, I'm supposed to see everybody a certain amount of times, talk to them a certain amount of times, which I do naturally anyway, but I don't.
She answers calls and texts from 30-plus people.
Yes, so it's busy. So I don't deal with the stats.
You're collecting a lot of the information.
I do.
And is it all paper form, or are you having a system that you can store all this information?
Well, it's all in our data system that we use for probation anyway, which Heidi has access to, and she can pull things out of that, so.
And the other thing I'll just add is, is what she just told you, she's being very humble. It is, it's unbelievable. And so when we talk about questions like, if there's a waiting list, why can't we go to 40? Why can't we go to 45? If you want to clone her and give us another one of those, so be it. But there's only, I mean, if, if she were a part-time employee, or if she wasn't phenomenal at her job, we wouldn't be the treatment court that we are. You know, you can imagine, when they come to court, generally speaking, and our participants haven't had a good week, they don't give me too much grief. But when they talk to their PO, they're happy to give Betsy some grief. She tracks it all. I mean, she keeps track of all of this. And every Monday morning, I get a pristine sheet on 15, 18 participants as to what they've done, where they are, updates of everything. We should have brought a sheet in. I mean, it's a two or three-page document that she creates every week for each of the treatment courts. So it's, I don't know how much she's paid, but it's not enough.
Thank you, my boss.
That's why I just looked at her.
So it looks like you've got on this chart on page eight, 13 people on the waitlist. What other things are reflective of community need, and do you believe the program is, is right-sized for that?
Yeah, we currently don't have a waitlist right now, so that was in the past. I mean, I think for now, case studies with being up to 35, I think that's good for just being in year three, seeing how things are doing, only having one probation officer. Best practice is, if you want, kind of the 35 mark for one probation officer. If you had, like, mental health case managers and many other things, you can kind of increase that number. So I think for where we're at, number-wise, we're doing good. Resource-wise, it's always housing and treatment. Like, that's always our biggest piece, is finding people, where can they transition to when they're done with treatment? A lot of times, you know, participants going back to the homes they came from aren't always the most healthy environments. So the housing piece is always huge, and just having treatment around here. We don't have a lot of residential options, or even outpatient options. So when we have to send people far away, we lose that connection with them. They're not coming that every other week. That's really important for engagement and building their peer support network with the other participants. So I think those are the two biggest community pieces we're missing to make this more successful.
Except that around July 1st, North Star Regional is opening a 48-male bed inpatient, and they will have outpatient over by the old Kmart building. So 48 beds is a lot, but that's going to be sweet. There also is another brand-new outpatient treatment program that opened up recently over on, like, Third and Marshall. So, but we still only have one sober house for women and one sober house for men. But at least for residential, things hopefully will change a little bit. And I think Scott County will have an in with North Star, so that's good news.
All right. And I just wanted to point out, just because I'm really excited about it, I know, like, the numbers don't, like, drive you that, that well, but I was pretty excited. On page two, like, you have identified some key performance indicators. Now that you have a series of people who have graduated, that you have the ability and a setup to track recidivism and to track relapse going forward for your graduates. So I just, I think that's really a, like, a really important piece of the development of your program, and in terms of looking at the effectiveness of your program. So I just wanted to make sure that got highlighted, because I think that's a good piece. With that, I think, could we turn it over? Can we turn it over to the audience for questions?
All right, another mental health center question. So, you know, you've had the opportunity to work with a lot of different populations and across different departments. So what has surprised you the most about this collaborative?
What I think is really nice, again, is just how quickly we can move on things. So when we, in other situations, if we didn't have all the partnerships and things going that we do, the example that I gave you about, you know, that Tim Growth from the Haven had done his own chemical assessment, he's coordinating with me, so then he can give me that information right away. I think that part has been just huge for what we're doing. You know, because again, I think, you know, the mental health center, we've got our own piece that we're doing. In this, the team atmosphere, I think it just is so much better for the participants to be able to have access to us, to be able to know that we're all coordinating, you know, coordinating together. You know, I'm providing information to the team, so they're getting information about the person's, you know, mental health diagnoses. And I think that has just, to me, I think that's a huge improvement. And it's, you know, great for us to go into graduation, too, because we can look at all of our graduates. Of the 12, I think seven had mental health services while they were here. Five are continuing ongoing. So, you know, half of our people are going to continue with that. So that was nice for me to see those numbers, because I think, again, too, there's a lot of stigma yet around, you know, seeking services, and we've been able to kind of break down some of that by normalizing that. And having it as a team, you know, the team accepts that as well. So I think that piece has been great.
I think, as we measured, the jail population was one of the comments. The other thing we can't measure is the crimes that don't get committed. So those people not being in jail also tells us that they're probably not committing crimes as well, and a lot of property crimes and issues like that, that arise in the community, come from the addiction. So we can't see that number, but it's there. It's, it's definitely have a huge impact. So we're just happy to be part of the program. The other issue I thought of when Judge Wolden was talking about the scale, say you doubled to the 70, could the law enforcement even handle that? You know, so there's also thoughts of, can we do it as well as we are now? Because if a city like Belle Plaine has one to monitor, it's very doable. If they had three, four people to monitor daily, it's, it's not going to get done or not get done as well. So we have to think of all that when we scale it up, of what, how we can do it appropriately and correctly. So, but we're proud to be part of it.
I just want to mention, and I already sent you an email, Heidi, I, thank you for sharing the story of, you have the pregnant woman in the treatment program, or treatment court program. Just to remind you, that now is actually an ideal time to tie her in with a family home visitor. It's not too early. We don't have to wait for the baby to be born. So if that is something that we can, public health can also help with, get her tied in now and help reduce stressors once the baby is born, and we can help support and be some boots on the ground as well. So keep us in mind.
Thank you.
We have had a couple, well, we've had three sober babies born in our program, and we have connected some of them with public health and the volunteer child protective services prior, so.
Been very helpful, yes.
Are there audience questions? Madam Chair?
Thank you.
Questions from the board?
Questions from the board. Yes, Commissioner Albrecht.
Yeah, I have a question about the housing piece. I understand, I would, I would have guessed that it's very complicated, as you indicated, Judge, but I was thinking that many of these participants might have come from a, a really unstable housing situation before going to jail, and then jail maybe made them homeless while they were in jail. In other words, if they were renting, you know, you can't be two months in jail and expect to still have a place, I suppose. But, so I guess I'm wondering about this dynamic, you know, and we're discussing housing in our county, you know, in terms of houses that are potentially next to a busy right-of-way where we acquire houses, a county. If you had a house, a four- or five-bedroom house that was maybe run by a nonprofit, would, would this program be able to make use of that, transitional-type housing? Is, is that something, if you knew you had that kind of facility or opportunity, would that be helpful, or would you make use of it, or?
I think any housing opportunity, I mean, is something to check out and see how we can partner with that, or how it could work for our participants. I think with any housing piece, we have to make sure it's the right fit for the participants, too, because if it's not somewhere that they're comfortable at, or they'll be stable at. So, but I definitely think connecting with that and having, you know, the more opportunities or connections we have, it's always better to have more resources in your pocket, I believe, so.
One more, if I could. About the ultimate success of somebody graduating, when they graduate, is there any process for expungement of, I mean, if they have something on their record that makes them unemployable, that seems like a real barrier to ongoing success. Do you, do you ever think about that in terms of graduates, or?
They actually talk about it quite a bit, and I know, I don't know if any of our participants have done it yet. So by law, they can't file for expungement until a year, until year after they're completely off probation. So the expungement laws, they get changed a couple of years ago to make that process easier and less expensive. We haven't had anybody in treatment court file for that yet. Their charges are dismissed if they successfully complete the program, but people can still see that they're charged. And some of them do have quite an extensive prior criminal history, too. So I haven't had anybody follow through with that process yet, but I know some are looking into it.
And the stays of adjudication make it a lot easier for expungement, but they have to wait that year. And so I would expect that potentially we'll have people coming back to go ahead and expunge those records. Under the law, with the stay of adjudication, it definitely makes it that much easier to go ahead and get that off your record.
And I don't know that employability, per se, is an issue for them. A lot of them can find jobs. A lot of people are actually willing to give people second chances as far as employment. It's, they're not willing to give them a, a second chance to move into a home, potentially, I guess, damage it, not pay rent, you know, those. So I think transitional housing is important, but I think that we would have to ensure that it's a sober transitional housing with the sober recovery kind of piece built into it. And as far as expungement, the process has indeed been made much easier by the state legislature, which is nice. We've had a couple participants go on to, like, trade schools, Dunwoody, things like that. And I think once they get through their education and then hit that higher employment market, they may find that their records then need to be expunged. So I think that's a piece we haven't quite hit yet, you know, maybe with licensing of certain types of things. Because that's really where the collateral consequences of convictions come in, is with licensing and DHS and employment opportunities in that field.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Yeah, I would say, this meeting started out by saying, hey, we've been doing this for three years, and we've had 12 graduates. And I was thinking to myself, if somebody just kind of dropped into this meeting and saw a roomful of government folks, and this factory's been open for three years and produced 12 things, I might say, what in the world's going on here? But a saying of old that I was reminded of says, do not despise small beginnings. And so I've been in the courtroom. I've, I've actually seen you on the bench, dispense love, if I may say.
Yep.
And I've seen you at ground level, at their level, dispense love. In my, in my view, you're a sincere fellow and, and a believable guy. And when they see you as a, as a person, I mean, that, that's a huge, all of us, when they see humanity purveying hope to others. It's a beautiful thing. And this program, to me, is one of those that has that love, peace, tough love, with accountability. It's both. And every time I'm with these graduations, I'm thinking, boy, how, how do we roll that out to other areas that we do? And I know that we probably are, we're just highlighting this one, but it's such a beautiful picture of, I'm a simple guy, so I always have to boil it down to the simplest of terms, of it's really one person saying to another, you have value, you have what it takes, I see something in you, and I'm willing to go above and beyond. I mean, we see these cops roll in, and have you ever tried to hug a cop? I mean, they're all kevlar up, and they got guns, gadgets, and gear, and you got, but they're doing things above and beyond because they see something in somebody else. And the power of hope, in my opinion, is probably the strongest force on earth. And so the more we, as Scott County staff, judges, commissioners, whatever, again, in my humble opinion, are, are doing that to humanity, oh my goodness. We're talking about changed lives that, that go beyond the 12. And when you're, this whole program, you, you've got 10 to 15 people in that jury box that are listening to all of this. So they're seeing somebody that has made it through, graduated, and they're being inspired, and families that are giving keys back to their son or daughter to, hey, we can trust you to come into this house again. I mean, that's the best humanity can do when it comes to transformation. I hope we do more of that. I would love to see more of that happen in the different areas of the county, you know, and not be, not that this is, I know you guys have federal statutes and all those things, but things that we can do in the county like that, to, to do more of, hey, I see something in you, you have what it takes. Life is messy, and I'm reminded of it every time I pass by a mirror, life is messy. But when we invest in other people, oh, good night. We're talking about changed world. So I love it, it's awesome. Keep up the good work. And I'm looking at Chris here, more of it, right?
More of it.
I think that's all I have.
Is that all you have?
Well, we'll see, we'll see.
My comments are short, but I just was surprised that, you know, you move into a small town like Belle Plaine, and you were saying earlier that, right away, they, we don't know if we want this character walking around here.
Right.
Move him along, and I, I thought that was great then. Now it's, welcome to our community, we'd like you to stay. I thought that was pretty good. I think the whole program's doing great. So, and I've been to a couple of these, and boy, it is, it's nice, just like you said. It's only 12, but boy, that's a big difference to those 12 people. So, thank you.
No, and I appreciate it. And I'll tell you, the, the numbers will just grow, and it took the first 18 months to get everybody from, you know, infancy to there. And so by the time we come back and see you again, I expect those numbers to be, to be great.
And it's not just 12.
Yeah.
It's, 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 it's their children, their parents, their grandparents. And some of the ways of the quality of life that you can look at is, some of our participants go have dinner with their grandparents, help them mow their lawn now, help them do home maintenance. These are things that improve the quality of life of your entire community. And so it's 12 times 12, because they are all connected to people who live here. And that's, it's, it's much more than 12.
I look at, and, so I, out in the garden, I grow trees, you know, so when you plant these seeds, you know, you've got to have this whole big vision out there that.
Right.
Because my trees, this-
my tree's this big now, it's, it's going to be bigger, so, and I think this will be, so, thank you again.
To wrap it up, thank you so much, thank you for your work every day, it's been really exciting to watch this program develop and grow, and for us to see the results. Just because some people do watch this, and I've had people ask me, I want to, want to remind everybody, some people wonder, well, how does the funding for the county board impact and make Treatment Court happen? They see, well, you're a judge anyways, right? You work for the Public Defender's Office anyways. So I just want to reiterate that what the funding out of our budget does is it funds the full-time probation officer, the half-time coordinator, so much of the drug testing and treatment costs, I think that's what a lot of people forget about, that that adds up. And there's often, if there's other avenues to pay for that, of course, the work of Heidi and the team makes sure those are utilized, but sometimes there's not. And then just other related program costs, so when you think about all those things, you can see where our budget goes, but more than that, we need to see that the partners, the state court system, the Public Defender's Office, others are really also contributing so that the net contribution is much bigger than our county board contribution. So just wanted to clarify that. And Lisa, thank you for your comment about public health, because ultimately, I mean, the lessons we want to learn from all of you, even though it isn't maybe quite your goal, is we need to, we need to move towards keeping people from getting to Treatment Court. I mean, that's, that's really all our goal, that's why Heather's here in this room, that's why other people are here. And so, the learnings that you have by being able to work intimately with these groups of people for two years, that, you're going to be able to tell us what other things we can do to make the demand and need for Treatment Court lessen, so I think ultimately, that's why we're all here. So, looking forward to hearing more, thank you for all you do. Thank you to Chris and the panel for leading this. We'll recess now for about five minutes to reconfigure the room so we continue on with the board meeting.
All right, I'd like to reconvene the meeting of the June 18th, 2019 Scott County Board of Commissioners. We'll move on to item seven, which is our consent agenda. These are items that have been previously discussed, often previously reviewed by advisory commissions and during workshop. I will go ahead and read all of the items, and then we'll decide if any need to be pulled or if the consent agenda will be approved as one item. Item 7.1, approve the request for a conditional use permit to construct a private indoor horse-riding arena, Kent and Brandy Gudnalsky applicants and property owners in section 35 of St. Lawrence Township. Item 7.2, to approve the request to rezone 40 acres from A1 Agricultural Preservation District to UTR-C Urban Transition Reserve Cluster District, Pete Cockling applicant and Connie Cockling and Curtis Henness property owners in section 25 of Sand Creek Township. As we discussed earlier, item 7.3 has been removed from the agenda. Item 7.4, to approve the request for rezoning preliminary plat and final plat of Bastier Estates Second Edition with Danielle and Timothy Stepka applicants and Greg and Jean Stepka owners in section 21 of Helena Township. Item 7.5, to approve the request to extend the preliminary plat rights for the territory development in sections 32 and 33 of Credit River Township, Zoned RR2, an additional six months to December 31st, 2019. Item 7.6, to adopt resolution number 2019-097, approving the findings of facts and conclusions for the Bass Ponds Environmental Assessment Worksheet and a negative declaration on the need for an environmental impact statement. Item 7.7, to approve the appointment of Ed Egan of Commissioner District Four to the Scott County Community Corrections Advisory Board for a term effective January 18th, 2019 through December 31st, 2019. Item 7.8, adopt resolution number 2019-085, acknowledging receipt and acceptance of gifts to Scott County. Item 7.9, to adopt resolution number 2019-090, authorizing a cooperative agreement with cities for trail preventive maintenance and joint purchasing. Item 7.10, to approve the Minnesota Department of Health Community Health Board Grant Project Agreement for the Family Home Visiting Program funded by the Federal Temporary Assistance for Needy Families Block Grant. Item 711, to adopt resolution number 2019-089, authorizing final payment to Northland Grading and Excavating for the construction of a roundabout at county highways 46 and 86. Item 7.12, to adopt resolution number 2019-091, authorizing final payment to Valley Paving Incorporated for overlaying, trail rehabilitation, and patching of various county highways. Item 7.13, to adopt resolution number 2019-092, authorizing final payment to Northwest Asphalt Incorporated for County Project T169-01, Mobile Manor Frontage Road. Item 7.14, to adopt resolution number 2019-093, authorizing the submittal of capital bonding requests to the Minnesota Department of Management and Budget. Item 7.15, to adopt resolution number 2019-094, authorizing the purchase of 4504 Egan Drive along county road, or county highway, excuse me, 42 in the city of Savage. Item 7.16, to adopt resolution number 2019-096, authorizing the conveyance of tax forfeit lands located in the city of Belle Plaine to the city of Belle Plaine. Item 7.17, to approve record of dispersments and approved claims, and item 7.18, to adopt resolution number 2019-098, authorizing the execution of the Deputy Registrar Minnesota License and Registration System reimbursement grant, application and liability release. And finally, item 7.19, to approve payroll processing of personnel actions. Those are the 18 items on the consent agenda, are there any that you would like pulled for further discussion?
Madam Chair, I'll move approval with the exception of 7.3. Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda, items 7.1 through 7.19, except for 7.3, is there any discussion? I guess I would just like to point out that Ed Egan is in the audience, and we're happy, he was in the audience, happy he was here to see the Scott County Delivers program.
Any further discussion? All in favor of approving the motion as stated, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign?
Motion carried, thank you. Now, we're on to a report for some, from some friends of ours, Keith Carlson from the Minnesota Inter-County Association and team, welcome Keith.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members, it's a pleasure for me to be here once again. As most of you know, this will be my last time appearing in front of you as Executive Director of the Minnesota Inter-County Association, I will be retiring as of August 2nd, and it's been a pleasure serving you and our member, other member counties for the past 20 years. I'm going to start off today with sort of an overview of this session, and really sort of its future implications for Scott County. Nancy Sleski and Steve Novak will follow me to the podium to discuss human services, health, and transportation respectively, then I'll have a few closing comments on corrections, public safety. So to start out with, what did this past legislature do? Well, for one, it did increase the county program aid formula, initially by $26 million a year, increasing to 30 million in 2021. So that portends a $589,000 increase in Scott County's program aid for 2020. There was some bad news in terms of additional cost shares for civilly committed sex offenders for their cost of supervision on provisional release, that will be a 25% cost share, but that should be offset by reductions in substance abuse treatment costs due to MA qualification of those individuals eligible for those costs. Here's the no new payroll tax for state-paid sick leave, that did not get enacted despite being a priority of the House DFL caucus, and there ended up being no threat of medical assistance cost shifts or Medicare cutbacks due to the legislature acting to eliminate the sunset of the 2% provider tax, that's the main funding source for the Healthcare Access Fund. On the bad news side of the ledger, there ended up being no new transportation funding, Steve will cover that more thoroughly. We did, however, get $200,000 to go forward to, with the final steps, leading to state assumption of the section 404 wetland permitting program currently administered by the Corps of Engineers. If the legislature after that has occurred decides to go forward with that, that would basically unify the state and the federal permitting process, which would be a substantial streamlining in the process that exists right now. Revenue bonds, as well as general obligation bonds payable by the local option sales taxes and new financing source available to the county, and there was no change in the distribution of the lease motor vehicle sales tax to Scott or the other four suburban counties, which is good news. One thing I do have to raise concern about is the long-term budget implications of what was done this past session. The legislature always basically establishes a four-year budgeting horizon, the immediate biennium that will begin on July 1st, and then the biennium after that that will begin on July 1st of 2022. And there are few concerns that I've identified on this document. First, the state's revenue growth is slowing, it's down to a 6.2% increase for the immediately coming biennium, slowing to 5% in the following biennium. Expenditures are slowing too, but not as much. And the implications of that is really shown on the bottom line, is how much they're dipping into their, what I've referred to on the top line as the carry-forward or balance-forward, you may call it fund balance. But basically, they spend some of that in each biennium, but usually don't dip into it very much in good economic times. Nevertheless, for the out-biennium that begins on July 1st of 2021, even without considering inflation, they are dipping into that fund balance by over half a billion dollars. That's quite large in good economic times. It's the, if the economy keeps on rolling along as it is, probably shouldn't be concerned, but if we hit a recession, that is a substantial concern. Few other concerns that are identified on this document is, one, the out-biennium expenditures anticipates $100 million of reductions in health and human services that have not yet been identified or enacted by the legislature, but nevertheless, they carry it in the figures. And then finally, as you probably know, the expenditure side of the ledger here in the out-biennium, the 2022-23 period, doesn't reflect inflation on the expenditure side. If you included that, that would add $2.7 billion to the total, they don't have the resources to cover that. Now, they don't have to fund inflation, but for example, in the current biennium, where inflationary costs were estimated to be about 1.1 billion, they funded 800 million of that, or nearly 80%, so they will have some significant budget challenges going forward. I got to conclude with some good news then. Revenues over forecast have been occurring for the last two months now. In the month of April, they received over $489 million of revenues in excess of forecast. And Minnesota wasn't alone in having that experience. Right now, the staff is speculating that, one, there was significant capital gains realizations by individuals because of, you know, the stock market hit historic highs back at the beginning of October of last year. And secondly, possibly in reaction to the subsequent downturn in the market, people like myself, for example, realized capital gains that we hadn't anticipated because we had stop losses on some of our stocks or mutual funds, and those executed under the quick decline that was occurring back in December. May was also up, and it was primarily due to the sales tax in that instance, and they're guessing that has the result of a recent Supreme Court ruling that makes sellers with no physical presence in Minnesota pay sales tax on their sales into Minnesota via the internet or mail order. So unless there are any questions, I'm going to turn things over to Steve to cover the transportation area.
Thank you.
Any questions for Keith before Steve?
Good morning, Madam Chair. Steve Novak, I handle transportation issues for Michael, let me give you a review of what did and did not happen in the last session. As you recall, as we got to the very end of the regular session, it ended without a budget being passed, and that also included transportation. So there was a fight between then and the beginning of the special session of how much would be allocated for all these different sections of the budget, and in the end, transportation received what we viewed to be a disappointing number, which was 93.5 million, and none of it went towards roads and bridges. Basically, it was broken apart in this manner. The MINLAR system, which was something that's been dragging on the state for three, four, or five years, actually, the history goes back about 12 years, there was a decision, basically a concession on the part of the governor to the Republican Senate, that he'd be willing to try their avenue of going out on the public sector with a contract to try to redo this whole system, and they allocated $55.6 million towards that ultimate contract. In addition to that, Metro Mobility receives its own line on the budget now going forward, and it's going to get $23.19 million in fiscal year 2020. And then there was a provision that said there'd be an additional $13 million if available in 2021, and we know now, we do know now that that money will be available, so that will happen. And then the third place that the money was allocated, again, had to do with MINLARs, and that was to compensate various deputy registrars around the state, $13 million for the losses that they've incurred trying to deal with the system that hasn't really functioned the way it should. Let me just say that from the beginning to the end of the session, as it relates to transportation, the big debate that was going on sort of pitted the governor and the DFL House versus the Republican Senate on completely different approaches to how to fund roads and bridges, which they both publicly have declared to be a priority for them. And the governor, who campaigned on the gas tax increase and other fee increases, led with that in his budget, the House essentially passed about 90% of what his proposal was. If that proposal had become law, it would have been a record amount of money for roads and bridges, but that is not what happened. The Senate's view of the whole situation is basically the opposite, which is, they feel that they made significant inroads back in 2017 by giving transportation a place on the list of subjects that should get money from the general fund. The centerpiece of that proposal back then was sales tax on auto parts. When the sales tax on auto parts is fully transferred, it'll be about $275 million a year, so it's not an insignificant item. And so just to tell you that, in this overall fight, it's very clear that the Senate won the fight, and basically, status quo is what we have going forward. That does not mean that there's no new money for transportation, roads, and bridges, so let me just tell you the three areas that current statute, which was the Senate position, had in place escalators that do move certain things forward. The single biggest one is sales tax on auto parts, and that will lead to about a $128 million increase over the biennium. The other one, which was touched on by Keith, is the lease vehicle sales tax. Back in 2017, there had been 32 million going back to 2008 when the program was initiated that stayed with the state. We had been trying to get that into transportation expenditures over a 10-year period of time, and that was accomplished in 2017. The bulk of that money, 32 million, went towards the creation of a new bridge funding program. And basically, in the battle between the House and the Senate on lease vehicle sales tax, again, the Senate's position, which was current law, did prevail, and so that bridge program remains, it adds $12 million and $14 million in the next two years. years towards that purpose. And then the third place, that new money will be transferred under existing statute, which again was the Senate position, is in the quarters of commerce, where the trunk highway cash, there'll be $25 million each of the next two years, for a total of $50 million in the biennium for those purposes. And that's about it in terms of new money for roads and bridges through those kinds of traditional mechanisms. In terms of individual transportation bills, there were three or four that passed of some significance, some of which you may have seen on the news. The one that got the most attention was the hands-free cellphone bill, which will come into place August 1st. You may recall this tragic accident with the light rail transit operator who killed a person at a crossing, and that led to a law being passed that puts the light rail transit operators in the same category as reckless and careless drivers. And then there was a workson flagger bill that passed, also sort of in that same genre of safety issues. And then some other important items that passed that were inside major budget bills was the ditch mowing, haying, that's been extended for another year. There were a couple of measures trying to increase truck weights, they did not prevail. The Met Council is once again authorized to issue grant anticipation bonds, and in addition to that, the Met Council was authorized to issue $92 million of bonds for buses. Metro Mobility service was extended to Lakeville, and there was a $1 filing fee increase for vehicle registration and titling. And then finally, what did not happen, just to be conclusive about it, there was no gas tax increase, there were no license tab increases, there was no metro sales tax increase, there was no bonding bill. And because there was no bonding bill, at the moment, there is no new money for the local road wetland replacement program, which will be an issue that will be on them right away when we turn the corner into the 2020 legislative session, because we have four out of the 10 wetland districts that have no credits at the moment, and that's only going to get worse. So that would be their review of the transportation issues. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Steve? Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I'm Nancy Seleski, and I do Health and Human Services for MICA. It was a pleasure to be here this morning. I don't think any of you have probably ever heard me say that it was a really good year for Health and Human Services. Those are words that don't always come out of my mouth. Several county priorities were included in the final bill. The one that we've been working on for some time deals with county appeals for folks that are placed at the Minnesota Sex Offender Program and the CBHH hospitals. If there's a delay in the discharge of the individual, that's not the fault of the county, but rather the fault of the facility, we have a mechanism now to appeal that decision. Things like not getting adequate notice, decisions being made on the weekends or holidays, and finally, that the department or the state doesn't agree with the county's discharge plan, those would all be appealable now under the new legislation that passed. We also got language in that we've had around for a while that allows for the limited sharing of data between the sheriff and social services when a person is being discharged from our jails. It's up to the client whether they want to receive those services or not. If they say, you know, I'm good today, last night was a bad day, I don't, or bad night, I don't need your services, that data then needs to be destroyed within 15 days. The child protection withhold elimination, 20% withhold elimination was eliminated. They put funding into the Child Welfare Training Academy. They put money into Mobile Crisis Services, which brings us back to the level of 2017 grants. They put money into psychiatric residential treatment facilities. There'll be an additional 80 beds that come online in July of 2020, and an additional 70 in July of 2023. They also invested $20 million into systems modernization. And finally, one of the big wins, I think, was the provider tax did not sunset. It is lowered 10% to 1.8% tax going forward, but that was something that everyone was concerned about what was going to fill that $700 million hole, so they did address that. We did pick up one cost shift relating to the Minnesota Sex Offender Program. The state put in $16 million additional funds, but they're assessing counties 25% for provisional discharges, and that's estimated to cost counties $3.52 million per biennium. However, this was offset by the state taking over the county cost share relating to behavioral health services. The state is now assuming the current county's cost for MA paid services, saving counties $8 million in the first biennium and eight in the second. And they're also, the state is also picking up the county share of room and board, and savings there are estimated at $10.4 million in 2021 and 9.3 in 2223. Terms of public health, there were a number of things that were included that we're happy about. Ship remains funded at the current rate of 17.5 a year. There is language that says that DHS may award up to 100% of tribal grants and up to 25% of grants to community health boards to strategies that are ethnically or culturally focused. The telemedicine language was adopted. This allows or provides for an exemption on the limit of telemedicine visits that we can have through MA for the treatment of tuberculosis. They funded the statewide tobacco cessation quit line. E-cigarettes were added to the Clean Indoor Air Act, and the prohibition of tobacco use in schools was expanded to charter schools. Terms of medical cannabis, the Department of Health may add a delivery method or add or modify a qualifying medical condition upon petition from a member of the public. It allows for additional dispensaries in the state of Minnesota. The one thing that didn't happen that was around was there was language that would have authorized the raw form of marijuana, the plant form, for medicinal use. That did not occur. That did not, was not included. Terms of standalone bills, our IT bill that requires acceptance, user acceptance testing before it goes online was signed as a standalone bill by Governor Walz earlier in session. Opioid prevention passed this year after about three years of working on that. Under the new law, $42 million will be collected on fees from manufacturers, pharmaceutical manufacturers. Of that, $16.3 million will go to Child Protection Services for families who are affected by addiction, and another $16.3 million will go to upfront or front-end services, I would say, that deal with prevention, education, training of prescribers, et cetera. They also put money into traditional healing grants, non-narcotic pain management, and the BCA Drug Scientists and Labs. And that was signed as a standalone bill also by Governor Walz. There were a number of things that didn't happen that I'll mention. There was no expansion of home visiting, which had been proposed by the House, and also no expansion of the local public health grants, again, proposed by the House. T-21 was introduced in both bodies, was included on the House side, the Senate just didn't pick it up at this point. We expect to see that coming back again next year. And the African-American Family Preservation Act was introduced, and that did not pass as a whole. There's going to be interim discussions on that before the next legislative session starts in February. There were a couple of components that did pass that were related to that. There's language that reestablishes the parent-child relationship after a parent's rights have been terminated if it's for a low-level crime. It cannot involve a crime involving a child. And also, the Child Welfare Training Academy, that again is housed at the University of Minnesota, does need to include a cultural component. So they did tick off a couple of those things that we wanted to get, they wanted to see it done this year. Finally, Governor Walz and the House had the One Care Buy-In, which essentially allows the expansion of Minnesota Care. That did not get included in the final, final deal. All in all, I think, again, it was a good year for counties. I want to thank everyone here, also want to do a specific call out to Pam Selvig and Lisa Brodsky of your staff there at the table when we're discussing all of these things, and they're great resources. You can always pick up the phone and call them. And as you know, HHS is so big, we need all the resources we can get. With that, I would stand for any questions.
Thank you, Nancy. Any questions? Commissioner Allred?
And the question I have was, was there an effort to cut long-term care, like $68 million, something like that?
Madam Chair and Commissioner, there was a proposal to do that on the House side that did not happen at the end. In the end, there, with the restoration, I think, of the provider tax and other investments, they were able to not reduce that into long-term care. That was something that was discussed but not passed.
All right, thank you.
Other questions? Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members, and I'm just going to close up with just a brief mention of the Corrections Public Safety area. Unfortunately, there was no additional funding provided for the Community Corrections Act counties or for the CPO counties, DOCs, Community Services, however, did receive some additional funding, as has often been the case over the, more than the past decade. There was frankly no other significant changes in the public safety corrections area that directly affect counties. There certainly was substantial new funding provided for the state's correctional institutions for additional staffing and changes in their solitary confinement policies. With that, any additional details, I'm going to leave to your questions or to the document that we distributed that is our end of the session that covers the environment, human services, and general government area. I do want to thank Scott County for its continued membership in our organization. Hopefully, we continue to provide services that are useful to you. Do specifically want to recognize Commissioner Allrick and Commissioner Beard for representing you on our Board of Directors. They do a very able job of bringing Scott County's concerns to our Board of Directors and shaping our policies that we take to the legislature. Also want to acknowledge the great role that your staff plays in assisting us, both at the legislature and in the shaping our policies, our platforms, as well as at our various staff committees that we meet and meet as frequently as monthly. Leslie Vermillion has a great staff, as I said. I also want to recognize Claire Robling and the job that she does in representing your county and working with us on issues of common concern. With that, I'll conclude. Be happy to hear any final questions or comments.
Well, I thank you for all your good work over the years. You're just a wealth of information, and I don't know how we'll find somebody that has all your experience and knowledge and you leave big shoes to fill.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you for your work.
All right, well, thank you. We are proud to be part of MICA. We are very invested and want to be part of the team. Thank you, Steve and Nancy, for everything you do. Your weekly updates are so helpful, just keeping us surprised of what's going on. And yeah, congratulations on your retirement. I wish you lots of adventures, but you will be missed, so thank you for all you've done.
Well, thanks again, Commissioners.
All right, we will move on to Item 9.1, which is to adopt Resolution Number 2019-095, approving the findings of fact and conclusions for Severs Festival Environmental Assessment Worksheet and negative declaration on the need for an environmental impact statement. And I believe we have Jesse Krasinski presenting.
Morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. I'm Jesse Krasinski from Scott County Environmental Services. I am today, here today to present to you in order to request the board approval on the completion of the Severs Festival Environmental Assessment Worksheet by determining the need for environmental impact statement. So I'll provide some background on EAW's environmental review process in case you're unfamiliar. So an EAW is not a permit, and any comments and concerns, we'll only be addressing possible significant environmental impacts from the project. So an EAW serves a few purposes. One is to assess a project's need for further study in an EAS, and this is done in the EAW by determining if the project has potential for significant environmental effects. Another thing it does is provides the public with information on what permits would be required by, through the project and that kind of thing. And the EAW addresses the potential for environmental impacts by looking at these topics, and these are taken directly from an EAW, so this is the actual content of an EAW here. You can see things like land use, where it looks at past and future land use from the project. Look at water resources, groundwater, surface water, stormwater, and big things like noise, transportation, air impacts, any of those topics. And these steps are basic representation of just the EAW process. So first, a project proposal would come in with information and data on their project, and then it's the RGU's responsibility to compose the EAW itself, and then it is submitted once it's completed to the Environmental Quality Board, which starts the 30-day comment period. After the comment period, comments are received and compiled, and responses are drafted to those comments. And then it is up to the RGU to make a decision whether an EAS is necessary for the project. So Severs Festival came with information on relocating their current facility in Shakopee to these three parcels in Louisville Township, and you can see it's on the corner of 169 and 14 there. Just some information on what Severs is. So they're a proposed event consisting of a fall festival, a winter festival, and then some special events. The fall festival is an annual event which would occur around August through November, and the operating hours would be 8:30 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., which would compile with the state standard for daytime hours. At their current facility in Shakopee, their operations are eight weekends a year, September through October. Fridays, 1:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Saturdays, 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Sundays, 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Some of the activities that they have is a corn maze, some music, some petting zoo, other family-type events. Their winter festival would more or less mimic the fall festival, just in January through February time. And then the special events are things like corporate parties and weddings that would also follow the same time standard of 8:30 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Here is the site plan for the fall festival, and this shows things of, you know, just where the parking is. It's just grass parking. It would be planted with, it's a high-traffic grass, is what I've been told it is, and then that could still be, can still be farmed and cut as they let it grow. If you look at certain numbers on the site plan, like number three shows the live music, and I do have pictures of some of these things that we can portray later, so it's easier to see what you would see at the typical fall festival. You can see where the maze is, it's, and then you can, the eastern portion of the site maintains that mostly egg use, where the western portion is the festival itself. So here are some photos. This is just the corn maze, typical what you'd expect to see with people walking through it. Some aerial photos of the tents and other events that happen within the site. The tents itself are non-permanent structures, so they can be taken down when they're done with the use. Here is just the petting zoo, and I believe that is a magic show for one of them. And here is the noise creators, the live music, as you can see, is just kind of a small band with a couple speakers that provides ambient music to the festivalgoers. And the other picture there is what they call the pumpkin blaster, and you can see the, how they use it there. And if you reference the music and the pumpkin blaster on the site plan, the music is directed away towards the highway so that the sound would be emitted away from the eastern property line of the residence there, and the pumpkin shooter is put all the way over to the left by the highway there. So the EAW for Severs was completed and submitted to the EQB on April 29th, and from there, we received comments after the 30-day comment period from a few state agencies and residents, as noted here, the DNR, MPCA, and MinDOT. And the comments of concern that we received in regards to the project and the EAW were traffic and noise. traffic and noise. Traffic analysis was completed as part of the EAW, and from there was recommended that a meeting take place in order to develop a traffic management plan. So, the proposal will be working with their consultant, SRF Consulting for Traffic, Scott County Transportation, Louisville Township, MINDOT, the Sheriff's Office, and also Renaissance Festival in order to develop this traffic plan to help alleviate concerns during the construction of 169. On top of that, Scott County Transportation Department is requiring a right-turn lane and a center-left turn lane to help alleviate traffic concerns from the entrance of the festival. And then the noise concerns, those were strictly from resident comments. And within the EAW, it does show that the levels of the project would not be exceeding any state standards at the property lines. However, if in the future, if sound does become a nuisance to the neighbors there, within the CUP, a noise analysis and mitigation plan can be required as part of that permit And with that, staff recommends a negative declaration on the need for an EIS. And I am available for questions, as the developer from Severs is also here.
Wonderful, thank you Jesse. Questions or comments for staff? Thank you. The written report was very comprehensive. I've received a lot of the residents' comments prior, but it was good to have them all in one place and the responses. Does the proposer have anything you want to say? Are we going?
I don't believe so. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Excellent, excellent. All right. What's your pleasure on this item?
Madam Chair, I will move to adopt Resolution Number 2019-095, approving findings of fact and conclusion for the Severs Festival Environment Assessment Worksheet and negative declaration on the need for an environmental impact statement.
No second.
All right, so I moved in second to adopt Resolution Number 2019-095. Further discussion or comments on this matter? See, no further discussion. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign? Motion carried. Thank you. All right, we will be moving on to item 9.2, which is to receive an informational presentation highlighting library program activities completed in 2018. Jake Gruising will be presenting.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. As Commissioner Breckie said, I am Jake Gruising, the Scott County Library Director, here to give my annual update on library activity. Because it's been several years since I've provided an annual update, I would also like to talk about, a little bit about how public libraries are changing. Still, I think a month doesn't go by that I don't either read or hear on the radio or get a question from somebody about the relevance of libraries, or the obsolescence of libraries, or even the death of libraries. So, I'm just going to talk a little bit about why I don't think that's a problem we should be paying attention to. But first, a little bit of background. So, in Minnesota, at the state level, public libraries are situated within the Department of Education. Minnesota is divided into 12 regional library systems across which $13.5 million are distributed each year. There are two kinds of regional systems, federated and consolidated. In a consolidated system, the member counties create a joint powers organization to provide consolidated library service. This is very efficient for providing consistent service over a wide area, so a lot of our rural library systems are consolidated systems, Great River and the St. Cloud area. Those six counties have a joint powers organization, so all the employees are Great River Regional Library employees, and they provide that service for the whole region. Rather than having every little town do its own cataloging, develop its own collection, try to manage its own programs, it's a good way to provide service. Our regional system is a federated system. We don't operate that way in the metro area. Not a bad idea, but a lot of work, I think, to get there. We're a federated system. In a federated system, service is delivered at the local level by the member libraries, and the regional system passes through some funding directly to those member libraries, but primarily encourages collaboration among its members, facilitates cooperative purchasing, and provides program and technical support. Because library service is administered locally, it follows that the funding is local as well. Here in Scott County, and this is not the case in the rest of our metro counties, library service is really a partnership between the county and the individual cities. So, we, the county, deliver service in buildings that our cities maintain and provide. We've been doing it that way since Scott County Library was established in 1969. We had public libraries, just for the record, we had public libraries in Scott County before 1969, but that was only organized as a system and joined MELSA. That makes 2019 the 50th anniversary of the Scott County Library, and we are looking forward to some celebrations in each of our communities to coincide with our hosting of the Minnesota Library Association Annual Conference in the fall. Just a little more in the way of background, this is how we compare to our metro library neighbors when it comes to operating revenue per capita. So, I think you can see in the red line there, I didn't format that really well, but Scott County is the lowest. That's supposed to highlight that we're the lowest among the eight metro area library systems in terms of operating revenue per capita. For us, that's about $3 million, just under $3 million in county levy support, about $400,000 a year the city's paying utilities and maintenance for those seven library buildings. We get about $40,000 a year from La Sure County. The New Prague Public Library is actually in La Sure County, even though it's part of the Scott County Library system. And we get a little check every year from La Sure County for providing library service to the residents who are within the city limits of New Prague, south of Highway 19. And we get a little bit of those regional funds. So, all told, that's about $3.5 million a year for library service in Scott County. Divide that by about 140,000 people, you get $25 per capita. That's our, that's our primary input. What do I, I think the important question is what do our residents receive for that? First, based on the data we track through our resident survey that we do about every three years, our residents' impression of us is that we provide a quality service. We've seen steady growth in those who rate our services as excellent or good, and a big jump in those who rate our services as excellent, which is very nice to see. Our residents receive library service in nine locations. One, one brick-and-mortar library in each of our seven communities. We had the Reed Mobile last year. And our law library, even though that operates through court fees, we can actually provide some public library services in that space. The majority of our revenue that we talked about, that $3.5 million, goes to fund that 36 FTE, our people. In our people, I think it's important to call out that they don't only provide the services, they really are a service in and of themselves, and they're viewed that way by our customers. If you have doubts about that, you could check out a recent Star Tribune article called "Libraries Without Librarians" and read some of the comments, and especially those on Facebook, and see how passionately people appreciate their librarians in their local libraries. Incidentally, they do not share that love for library directors. But I'm working on that. They also, they also love books. So, over 900,000 items circulated in 2018. That comes out to just under one item every, about one item every 30 seconds. If you look at how many, how many minutes there are in a year, that to me just puts it in kind of an interesting perspective, that about every 30 seconds, somebody's using one of our physical or digital items in our library system. Just to get a sense of the trend for circulation, going back to 2010, 2011, so library usage tends to run countercyclical to the economy, so when we have a recession, a lot like of community technical college enrollment, we see a spike, and when the economy recovers, we see a little bit of a drop-off. But we've been, we've been pretty stable the last four or five years, and for 2019, we're actually about 6% ahead of where we were at this time last year. Digital use continues to grow, that's highlighted in the blue at the bottom, but physical materials are actually holding steady. They're declining a little bit year to year, and that's a national trend, but we're not seeing what some people predicted 10 years ago, that everybody would stop using physical materials and they would only access things digitally. We have some people who have made that transition, but it hasn't been as, as rapid a shift as I think some people expected it to be. In terms of visits, about 450,000 people every year walk through our doors. Down again from our peak around the recession of about 500,000 visits a year, but that's still over 1,200 people every single day walking through the doors of our Scott County Library facilities. So, you see the rest of the number, the 100,000 cardholders, 50,000 computer sessions, that's the one that actually continues to go up and surprises me a little bit that we still see increased demand for public PCs and that connectivity. But these are traditional library outputs that you probably would have seen if we had a presentation in 1969. You'd see circulation, you'd see how many people walked through the door, how many programs did we have, who showed up for that, how many hours were we open? That, I think, is the what of libraries, and that's important to talk about. I'd like to just shift a little bit and talk some about the why and how that has changed over time, because I think it's a significant change. If this is still your picture of library service, this doesn't give you a very complete picture of what's going on in our spaces and out in our community. A few years ago, I had a colleague in Columbus, Ohio, who did what to me was an interesting little bit of research with their Facebook followers, so they have 40,000 friends on Facebook. We have about 1,500. I think ours are probably real, real friends, not sort of fair-weather friends, but they have 40,000 Facebook friends out there in Columbus, and they posed just two questions. One was, what five words would you use to describe the library of your youth? And they phrased it that way, so a 37-year-old, a 57-year-old, a 97-year-old could have some way to respond to that question. What are the five words you'd use to describe the library of your youth? Then they asked for the five words that you'd use to describe the library you envision 20 years from now. So, for the library of your youth, probably no surprise to anybody, books are the biggest thing, books, research, quiet is very prominent on there, and reading. The library 20 years from now, those words are still present. You still see books, reading, research, they're there, but they're de-emphasized. The biggest word you see jumping out at you is community, technology, access, meeting, knowledge, gain some traction there. So, to me, this is, this highlights a shift that's already underway. We're going from libraries that are about what people sort of take from us to libraries that are more focused on the connections people make within that space, whether it's with content or with each other. And this, to me, just leads to interesting questions. What does it mean for libraries to be about community? And what does that actually look like on a day-to-day level in our spaces? So, I want to share two stories from our frontline staff over the last year, just to start to sort of think about answers to that question, those two questions. So, this is from one of our staff members in Savage. I'll read it, so in the event folks who are listening at home can, can get the full effect. "I've had several longtime customers who've developed dementia. It is hard to give up control of your entire life, especially when you're used to being in charge. The respect we give these customers goes a long way towards helping their confidence. Every day, we help the elderly and the young and everyone in between, but to restore some independence to those suffering from dementia, that is a subgroup we usually don't talk about. We have created relationships and a safe place for those struggling to come in and make decisions." Second story comes from our Shakopee Library. "I registered a new card to a young man with halting English. First book he checked out was a Somali to English translation book. The next time he came in, his speech had already progressed, and he asked if there was a way to continue improving without so much studying. That was sort of my technique in school. I suggested he listen to an audiobook because it could be in the background while he did other things, so he could start to hear the rhythm of the speech. After showing him the nonfiction selections, he said he wanted me to pick for him, and we settled on a self-help book about confidence. Next time he came in to return the audiobook, someone found something for him upstairs. When checking it out, he asked how the librarians were able to just walk up to the right book and pick it off the shelf. I grabbed a couple nonfiction books off a cart and showed him the spine label and explained just a little about the numbers corresponding to a subject, and that each book has only one correct place on the shelf. He just looked at me for a while with his eyebrows raising. I was going to explain more, but he stopped me. 'No, no, that's enough for today. There is so much to learn, and this Dewey system has rocked my world,' which is not something we hear that frequently in the library, that the Dewey Decimal System is still really shaking people up, but that's a claim." So, I love, I love those stories for a couple reasons. In both instances, there's something transactional going on. Those people who have relationships with our staff and are starting to experience some symptoms of dementia, they probably came in to use a computer, to pick up a requested item, to attend a program. The young man came in to study English. But there's also, and it might be subtle in some people's opinion, but I think a transformation there, a sort of a strengthening of the social fabric every time we're building relationships with people in that way. Almost impossible to measure, I think, but that shouldn't undermine the value of those interactions, and I want to be intentional about continuing to call attention to that. So, our Reed Mobile, year one, we had 149 visits in the community, over 2,700 visitors, 2,500 items circulated, 1,100 items through the support of our private and civic funders. We gave away 1,100 items. But again, that doesn't tell us a whole lot about the impact of the Reed Mobile. I think we could say that's, yeah, that's good, we can kind of be on board with that. But what I'd love to know is, I think it's something Hamani, who was here maybe at the last board meeting, talked about, are those kids we're reaching via the Reed Mobile, do they have one more adult in their community who cares about them? And do they understand that, that they have somebody there other than a parent or a teacher who is supporting them and believes in them? Similarly, last year, we rolled out what we are tentatively calling at-home library service, which was in response to demand from our homebound residents, tend to be seniors, older adults, but not exclusively. And last year, we delivered over 1,000 items on 150 one-on-one visits to homebound residents in Scott County, primarily in New Prague and Shakopee. That's where we have the staff capacity and volunteers to do that. But in the course of those visits, of course, you're knocking on somebody's door and delivering some requested library materials, but also making conversation. You might be the only person they get to talk to that day or that week. And we learned pretty quickly that these folks had some additional needs, including access to food that they had shared with our staff. It's, it's hard for me to get groceries in here sometimes, and I go without eating. So, we tried to refer those residents to the appropriate public programs. And again, how many of those questions, something we can't, we can't measure, a question we can't really measure that well. But how many of those residents now feel a little less isolated socially and maybe more connected to their community? And does that have an impact on their health and well-being and their quality of life? Lastly, earlier this month, just a couple weeks ago, Bethany Chernholm, the Executive Director of FISH, came to our library management team meeting and got all of our managers registered to be FISH affiliates, because we have more and more people walking through our doors who need services in the libraries where they're turning to get connected with those. They're, they're not, anecdotally, they're not typically connected with social services or with CAP or with faith communities. And one of the things I say every now and then about public libraries is that you don't have to buy or believe in or belong to anything to be welcome in that space. You can walk in and know that, that that's a safe place for you regardless of your, your status as a person. So, I hope that gives at least some sense that that library that is 20 years in the future is really the library we have today. That's, that's how our customers, that's how our public is using our space. If we have a problem, I don't think it's relevance or sort of are we obsolete or are we dead? It's that we are so many, we are so many different things to so many different people on any given day. It's hard for us to communicate what the value is. We have these traditional outputs, this many books went out, this many people walked through the door, but I don't believe that's really the impact of public library service here in Scott County or anywhere else. So, I want to just close with one final slide inspired by conversations with our staff. So, last year, I met one-on-one with all of our, all of our staffs, our managers, our librarians, our associates, our substitute folks, and our shovers who are typically high school students. And they were, I think, the least, rightly so, they were like the least excited to sit down and meet with me. One of our shovers, a high school student, one of the questions I asked was what he enjoyed most about his job, and he just sort of shrugged his shoulders and said, "Nothing." It's, it's kind of boring, and I've been a shover, so I would totally agree. It's not the most exciting job in the world. And he explained sort of what it was. The books are on the cart. The, the books are on the cart, you take them off the cart, you put them in the right place on the shelves. But then he, he said something that's still, I, I still can't really get over how much I like what he said. But then I was quiet, and he said, well, sometimes I think that today might be the day somebody comes in looking for one particular item, and because of me, it'll be right there in the right spot, just waiting for that person. I still really like that. And so that got me thinking about, okay, what is it that really happens in our libraries every single day? So these are examples from our staff. So somebody comes in and finds a job. Learn about your ancestors, shelter from the cold or from the heat during the day. We still have people coming in who have never used a mouse. I think that maybe the demographics on that are changing. It might be some younger people now who have never used a mouse. They just use their thumbs on their, their tablet or their phone. Delivering books to an older adult, we've talked about that. Meeting somebody new. There are plenty of people who come into our spaces to attend arts and cultural programs just to connect with people in their community. We have a volunteer in Savage who offers Tai Chi in one of the meeting rooms. People just lending a helping hand, whether that's our staff, whether that's a kind customer, whether that's one of our volunteers. Our early literacy classes, which I've talked with, with you, the board and the public about quite a bit. Learning to write the first letter of somebody's name, just a place to feel welcome and safe. Again, we know anecdotally, there are some people in our communities in Scott County who feel less than welcome in that community, but they do feel welcome in our libraries. And that, that means a lot to me and to our staff. And hopefully, every day, we're, we're encouraging somebody to have some self-belief and some higher self-regard. And to me, that, so we do all these things and so many more. But I think one of the most amazing things about all that is we can't really, we have no control over that. We can't force people to come into the library. And we're not very good at even enticing people to come into the library. That's not a Scott County thing. I think that's just a public library thing. Public libraries, I will say, like, I'm in that field. It's not the coolest place in the world. But we have good things. And people come in, they have to take some initiative. And when they do take that initiative, we are there for them. But it's what they bring. And I think that's the story that I hope I can start to tell around all those outputs. Is that we provide the opportunities, we make the connections, whether it's to FISH, whether it's to one of our classes, whether it's to social services, whether it's to another person, whether it's to a book or a DVD. But I think we're sort of gathering all this kindling, but the, the people coming in, the residents coming in actually have to provide the spark. And I just, I want to highlight that that's happening. I think hundreds of times every day, people are walking through our doors, bringing that spark. And hopefully, we have the, the right kindling there to, to serve them well. Lastly, I just want to express appreciation, my appreciation to you, the, the county board, to our library board of advisors, to my predecessors, especially Mayor Williams of Savage. She was our library director for thirty years. And for our staff to, to bring our library system to this point. That per capita funding slide that I had up there, we, we are the lowest. And that makes me think about, like, you know, professional boxing. You would never really pit a flyweight against a heavyweight. It would be, I think, kind of a gruesome bloodbath. But then they also have those pound-for-pound rankings, where they will say, okay, you have the flyweight. Pound-for-pound is the best fighter out there, better than the heavyweights. I think we deliver a lot of value for that twenty-five and change per capita. And I'm proud of that, our staff are proud of that. This is just a little more of, you know, how that shakes out. A lot of it has to do with what we're able to provide. But my, my argument that I'm trying to propose here is that those numbers don't tell much of a story. It's actually what's happening every time somebody walks through our doors or every time somebody checks out an item. What's that interaction? What's that spark that they're bringing that, that really makes a difference? So with that, I will stand for any questions or comments you might have.
Thank you, Jake. Mr. Eller.
I'd like to pick up on that coolest place-to-be idea. Through grandchild, I got exposed to some libraries out west and in California. And the ones that I were exposed to kind of shocked me because the children's portion of it was almost a cross between the children's museum and a library. In other words, lots of interactive, lots of fun things, lots of learning, play things in the library. And I, I have been to the children's museum, so I, I'm making an accurate description. My, my question is, you know, when we have, studies show that at third grade, about a third of the kids are not at reading level. If we were to create a vision for turning the, the children's portion more, to more exciting, more interactive, would that help kids fall in love with reading, with library? Could we get, you know, grants from foundations or interested people in the community that would donate to that kind of thing? Or do you think that's a worthy thing? Is it something to explore or?
I do think that's something to explore. Most of our libraries were built within the last fifteen to twenty-five years. So I think over the next five to ten years, it'll be prime time for us to do some plans, some planning with the county and with our cities on what do we want our spaces to look like going forward. And there are some libraries out there, I think the, the one, and you've shared that with me before, in California, but there are libraries all over the country that have really embraced that. Some of the best work we can do is from birth to five. So can we not just devote resources in terms of people and content there, but also our space? Can we create spaces that are engaging and playful and spark imagination and a passion for something? It doesn't have to be reading necessarily, but just some kind of learning, some kind of curiosity and engagement in something in that child. So I, I'm hopeful we'll be able to start moving in that direction.
Other comments or questions? Commissioner Wolf.
Thanks, ma'am. I was just surprised, I think we went on that Bell Plain tour, was it? And we looked at the Bell Plain Library, and you talked about how people would sit out in their cars just to get internet. And I just thought, well, yes. We could somehow or another get it so that everybody had internet at home and whatever. That, that'd be a great thing, so.
Thank you. I drive by a library probably daily. And I was probably one of those guys, if, if you'd asked me, my word picture, you know, about what do you think of a library would have been one sort of word? Shhh. That was, because a friend of mine was always making noise in the library when I went with him or her. And so during one of our Future Leaders presentations that we go on at the different schools, you know, part of the presentation is the library, and, and I happened to be at Saks doing the presentation. And I said, hey, how many of you have visited the library in the last month or two? Because I was just kind of curious, very scientific poll. There were a ton of hands that went up, which I was surprised because I'm, I'm going to assume most of their parents pay property taxes one way or the other and tuition to a private school. And a lot of those students went to the library. So that was a, a learning experience for me to see how much of that age uses the library. And with Leslie, you know, I went on the, I'll call it the thank you tour, you know, delivering, you know, a little, just to say thanks to people. To your point, you know, how do librarians feel? To, to a T, we apparently hit every library at the, at the downtime. And they're, they feel the heat of, oh, it was, you know, you should have been here a half hour ago. And like, there's no doubt that, that it's used. And to me, there's no doubt that you are looking for new ways to broaden the, the menu that the library can afford to the community. So I, I, I take great comfort knowing that you're looking at those different tools and how do we best utilize this tool that we have in the toolbox. So I've, I wasn't looking to get rid of the libraries, but I was just, you know, having that old-school sort of mentality of what a library offered and to see, you know, the new generation, the next generation, how much they do use it and other things that I can provide beyond the book and, you know, digital content is, and, and knowing that you are looking at those new ways to use an old tool in a new way. So kudos to you and your staff. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Jake. It's my pleasure to represent the board on the, the MELSA Board and also the, the Scott County Board of Library Trustees. It's, it's exciting how, how everyone involved is really looking at bringing libraries to the next level, making sure that they're here to serve the citizens and change lives. I, I agree with everything that was talked about. I think the, the thing that I want to highlight is that I've really seen increase in the past years is the partnership with the libraries in all our communities, really partnering with community organizations, with our cities, and even with some private businesses when appropriate, which, which I think is good. We don't want to operate in a silo. We want to continue that partnership because especially in some of our smaller towns, the library is, is just very important as a community gathering place, as a place for civic and, and nonprofit organizations. And, and that in itself is just a great service to that community. So, thank you, Jake.
Thank you.
All right. We'll move on to item ten point one. I think Brad Davis presenting to adopt Resolution Number twenty nineteen dash zero eight eight to adopt the Scott County Twenty Forty Comprehensive Plan.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. We are at the final step of about a three-year-long process of updating our Long Range Comprehensive Plan. We call it the Twenty Forty Comprehensive Plan. You may have thought that you've already adopted this because you did in a way. Back in December, we asked you to authorize conditional approval of the plan and submittal to the Metropolitan Council. And so that action was taken back on December eighteenth. The plan was submitted, and it took a little bit of time for council to make sure that we had all of the requirements in a comp plan. We were missing some maps and some labeling and what I'd call more technical issues. But we finally got that straightened out. In about April, they started the full review of the plan and then bring it through some of their committees. And you can see the dates of when the committee and the council took kind of their actions. And so last week, on July, or excuse me, June thirteenth, we received this letter from the Metropolitan Council telling us that it's gone through the full council review and that we should place the Twenty Forty Plan into effect. So that essentially means adopt it by a resolution. So that's what you have before you today is that resolution formally and officially adopting the plan. Because we recommended some changes in land use in New Market Township, the action also advises their own staff to amend the community designations map. And then finally, we're asked to address many of the advisory comments that staff, council staff provided. And so we have done that in this final version. The final version of the plan will be dated today, June eighteenth, twenty nineteen. That will incorporate all of the different changes. You've seen this slide several times, but just a reminder, I'm holding up the plan itself. We have it both in a paper document like this and online. It, it really is a blueprint, a guide for decision-making here at the county, whether it's land use, transportation, parks and trails, natural resources, utilities. A lot of the things that come before you as a board, we need to kind of know, what's the game plan? Where are we heading with some of these major decisions and major investments? We hope the Twenty Forty Plan will be your first reference to look to and make sure that these decisions are in compliance with the plan. We spent a lot of time over the last three years making sure that the plan reflects the goals, values and vision of our county residents. And we've, I've been at the podium many times talking about that community engagement. And again, this plan is an update. The county has been doing long-range planning since the nineteen sixties with the adoption of the first plan in seventy-two. And you can see the dates of the previous plan adoptions. So there has been a few changes that I wanted to note since the plan was conditionally approved back in December. It's all documented in your staff report. But just here's some of the highlights on this slide. Since the population and household forecast came out three or four years ago, St. Lawrence Township and the city of Jordan entered into an orderly annexation agreement showing a large swath of St. Lawrence Township that's really destined for annexation. A lot of it is along one sixty-nine, where they're, the city is investing in some major utilities to serve some land uses. And because of that, the Met Council wants to adjust the population, population and household forecast, really reduce them a little bit in St. Lawrence Township and then add it to the city of Jordan. So we've, we've made that change in the plan. Whenever we look at a planned unit development that is going to receive density bonuses and they're in our long-term sanitary sewer service area, so that's much of the western and central part of the county, everything really outside of the four eastern townships, areas that are guided for long-term sanitary sewer service, sewer service. When those PUDs come in, the Met Council would like us to kind of simultaneously look at a comprehensive plan amendment so that the Met Council has a chance to review those developments and make sure that they're clustered in a way that can accommodate more urban densities in the future. Staff was looking for a little more definition and description of our hamlet mixed-use category and how we're going to implement that. Again, there was a lot of just requests to modify some labeling on our parks and transportation maps. And then because the plan is, was initially really written in twenty seventeen and eighteen, we wanted to update it with the most recent census data where we could and update it with some of the twenty nineteen resident survey data that just came out a few months ago. So we're one of two hundred local governments in the Twin Cities that are updating their, our long-range comprehensive plans. Again, the plan before you today is in partnership with our ten townships. Credit River Township is doing their own Twenty Forty Comprehensive Plan. The cities are in the process of doing their own plans as well. I think half of them, I'd say more, more than half on the list have already gone through the process and are in a similar stage that we're at, looking at final adoption. I think the outlier might be Elko New Market that has not yet sent the plan out for review. But I think all the other communities have, are in a similar spot as we are. And again, all of our local plans need to conform to the Met Council's policy plans and system statements. You can see them listed on the slide. So that's what the Met Council staff spend a lot of time looking at our plan and making sure that we're consistent with, with these major policy plans. This slide is just to communicate how this is a cycle. We, we do this planning process every ten years. Believe it or not, we're talking a lot about the Twenty Twenty Census. So the cycle begins here shortly. And if you replace the one with the two and all the years you see in front of you, that's generally what is ahead of us for the next ten years. In about twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, we'll start hearing about the next big regional blueprint, regional planning effort that will inform the next cycle of planning here in, in the region. So I mentioned that this has been about a three-year process. A lot of time in twenty sixteen was doing a lot of data gathering, kind of informational gathering, identifying what issues we wanted to look at in the update. A lot of twenty seventeen was focused on community engagement, listening to a lot of stakeholders in a, in a variety of ways to get input into the plan. Twenty seventeen and eighteen was really then spent drafting the plan and getting a lot of the content put together so we could move into twenty eighteen, where we started the formal public review process with open house events, public hearings, formally sending the plan out to sixty-five different entities to, to review the plan and take all those comments back. And finally, look for recommendations from our planning commission or in our township boards. And then that got us to last December where we conditionally approved the plan. There has been a lot of work already underway to implement the Twenty Forty Plan. Even though today we're looking for final adoption, we started thinking about implementation over a year ago. And we've already started setting up a lot of meetings and staff time looking at updating our zoning, our subdivision and septic ordinances to implement or carry out key recommendations in the plan. We've held our first round of meetings with the townships earlier this spring to start talking about those updates. And we'll be doing more of that throughout this summer and fall. The plan recommends some brand-new zoning districts, some new performance standards in kind of a vague way in a, in a goal or a policy. And now we've got to get to the nuts and bolts of kind of the specific zoning districts. And that's the work that we're doing now. When we partnered with the University of Minnesota's Resilient Communities Project, one of the goals was to take a look at what are some of the big recommendations we're hearing in the plan? And how could we get some students and faculty to help us really drive some of those ideas? So over the last year, you can see the different topics that we had. University of Minnesota Research University of Minnesota Research looking at. So many of these things, again, were just great information and a great way for us to kind of springboard some of the recommendations coming out of the plan and taking them to the next level. And I know many of you have heard about the, the Resilient Communities Project. Um, I just want you to know, kind of again, and remind you again, the link back to the 2040 Plan and where those research ideas came from. You're looking at making some important investments here, uh, in the next budget cycle and the next capital improvement plan. And a lot of the things that will be in front of you, again, came right out of the 2040 Plan when you look at investments in roads and parks and trails. Um, some of the early ideas came up in this planning document. You know, probably what's even more important is our individual landowners and property owners are starting to implement the plan. One of the items that you had on the agenda, on your consent agenda today, was a landowner that, uh, is looking at plating land using some of the new density guidance that's in the 2040 Plan. We have some development review team meetings coming up where property owners are starting to see some of the guidance that's being adopted today and want, and want to sit down and talk to us about what is this new rural business category? How can I open up this, this new category and develop some of my land with some of these commercial uses? So I think it's just as important to note that our, our landowners and property owners are starting to take steps to implement this plan. This has been the most important page for me and it's recognizing all of the staff from both the county, the townships, our watershed districts, all of our advisory, uh, commission members, uh, in particular the planning commission, but also the parks and the WMO. Um, you as a board, all of the countless hours together we've spent working on this plan, um, working through the issues, um, holding the hearings, going to the meetings, um, and finally being, uh, proud to be able to prepare this final plan. Uh, and that's what's before you here today. And with that, I will just stand for any questions.
Thank you, Brad. Questions or comments from the board? Probably because we've been involved in falling along.
Yeah, it was a long process and there was a lot of participation. And I see one of my constituents here that, out in Cedar Lake, they changed things up a little bit by speaking together. And I think that's a great thing, so.
Just want to say to you and, and your staff and all the staff that you just listed here, thank you. I know this is a big lift. It's a big project. There's a lot of counties, there's a lot of cities who hire outside professionals to do their plan. Um, I think we take the right approach here where staff and stakeholders and citizens really create the plan and make the plan. We're so much more invested. We know what it, uh, says and, and it, it just means a lot more that it's done in-house. But I know that's a big, big job. So thank you to all who are involved. One request I have is after we approve it today, if we can have a, an easy link right on our website on the, the front page of the 2040 Comp Plan. I think that's important for, for citizens, for other jurisdictions, for developers, all that. So.
With that, Madam Chair, I would move to adopt resolution number 2019 dash zero eight eight, adopting the Scott County 2040 Comprehensive Plan.
Second.
All right. It's been moved in second and to adopt resolution 2019 dash zero eight eight. Any further discussion on this matter? I feel like there should be fireworks or something. Um, with that, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carried.
Nice picnic.
All right. Um, next we're on to item 11, Committee Reports and Commissioner Updates. Oh, yes. Sure, sure. You want to come up to the podium, please? Yep, stay here, guys. This might be good, it might be bad.
Give us your name and address, too, then.
Name and address, please.
Glenn Huberger, and I live in Cedar Lake Township on 270 Street. So I just have two comments. One is, I really appreciate everybody listening to our community. That was really important. And the second is, those guys, they listened. They engaged our community. They listened. They made changes. And I'm very grateful for what they've done. So those are my two comments.
Thank you. Thank you for being here today. All right. Now we'll move on to, uh, item 11, Committee Reports and Commissioner Updates. Commissioner Wolf, would you get us started?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the 4th, uh, June, uh, Newmarket Township had their township meeting and, um, I brought them the news that the, um, YMCA had been, um, approved and they, uh, you know, were neither, I guess, happy or sad about it. They just, they kind of figured that's how it was going to go. On the 5th, we had the groundbreaking, uh, for the new addition out here. And, uh, on the 6th, the Bell Plain, we had the tour. So had a nice tour out there and, uh, saw a lot of nice sights. And boy, things are really popping out in Bell Plain from, uh, the days of, when I was a kid. So, uh, on the 10th, Planning and Zoning met, uh, had a couple permits that were approved tonight. On the 11th, I was out at the, um, fairgrounds, uh, the extension Master Gardeners put on a, um, little presentation about some, uh, different types of flowers and, uh, baskets and, uh, um, some of that stuff. And I thought was, uh, uh, very interesting. There's a lot of not-so-mainstream flowers and plants out there that you don't see at the greenhouses because they're not, they don't fly off the shelves like petunias and pansies and stuff. But, um, there's others that are out there that if you look in the back, you might find them. And, uh, they're very nice. They're sometimes tougher to grow, but that's, uh, but they look very nice. On the 12th, the Metropolitan Emergency Services Board met. Uh, after that, I had a, a meeting with the Metropolitan Mosquito Control District, uh, Administrator. Talked about the black flies and, uh, they were, as I spoke to him, out putting, uh, a solution out. It's a bacteria that draws the black flies in and as they eat it, it kills them. You might have seen it on the, uh, on the news, but, uh, they were bad, the black flies. It's, uh, I use vanilla. It, it works for a little bit and you actually, you don't smell like deet. So anyhow, um, let's see. Then, uh, Spirit of Scott, they had a nice little, uh, get-together. I, uh, saw Commissioner Brecky and Commissioner Beer out there, uh, flipping burgers or helping out a little bit there. So it was, uh, very well-attended. Uh, met with the Elko Newmarket Mayor and our, uh, uh, Administrator, myself and the Administrator of Elko Newmarket. Talked about a few things and a number of projects they have going out there. And they're, uh, they've got quite a few things that are, um, that are on the, uh, stovetop right now cooking. So, on the 13th, the I-35, uh, Solutions Committee met. Um, very good presentation about the self-driving cars and where that's at right now. Um, it's still a little ways off, but, um, there are cars across the country, trucks, um, that are right now driving without people. And, uh, some of these people are actually getting pulled over because, you know, they're, they're sitting in their car, the steering wheel's here and they're, they're taking notes and, you know, they're watching what's going on. A state troop will drive by and pull them over and, because they, even though they're doing this in research, it's still against the law to not drive with, you know, holding on to the steering wheel. So, um, they're trying to figure out a way around that whole program. So very good presentation. Met with a MINDOT guy after that, uh, you know, discussed some, uh, possibilities on some road projects out here. Then, uh, Spring Lake Township met and, uh, Elko Newmarket, uh, had their monthly meetings. Attended those. On the 14th, I was at SCALE. And, uh, yesterday I was at the bid opening for the 2113 project. Uh, came in a little higher than we had estimated. Um, so we'll see what happens with that. And then last night, uh, Prior Lake City Council had a workshop and a, uh, regular meeting. At the workshop, they went over the, uh, 2019. They're talking about the budget, the CIP, you know, what their, all the needs for the money. And at the, uh, regular meeting, they did, uh, it became a Purple Heart City. So it was, uh, very nice and well-attended ceremony there. So that is my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Beer?
Thanks. On the 4th, had my monthly meeting with the Administrator. The 5th also was at the groundbreaking. Um, trying to keep you guys out the excavator, but I didn't win that battle. So actually, thanks for getting us up there. Uh, and then later that afternoon, we, I think we all were on that Parks Tour. And, and once again, just a great reminder of, boy, we've got some great gems, uh, both currently online and some that will be coming online. Um, really nice parks and facilities in this county. Um, get out and use the ones that are open and ready to roll. Um, the 6th, we had our Bell Plain joint meeting. That was, uh, always enjoy working with our different townships and cities. So it was a great, um, time that evening. The 11th, Prior Lake Spring Lake Watershed. Uh, one item of note there in the past, uh, session in St. Paul, they got a, uh, a law change that will allow more commercial fishing. Um, so there's no monopoly per se. So, and really where they're interested is, is getting the carp out. Um, so they can, because it seems like they're ready to seign and they can't find the right, you know, the guy doesn't have opening or somebody sneezes and they're dispersed. And, and so this really opens that up. And, and Tony Albright and Eric Pratt, uh, carried that bill, part of our delegation, of course. So that was a, a big win. So it seems kind of funny, but it's, it's a big deal. Um, and then later that evening, also our Shakopee Quarterly with the Mayor and Manager. The 12th, as was mentioned, the Spirit of, uh, Scott BBQ. It's always great to see our folks in a little different environment. Um, and just be able to hang out in a, in a, just a different setting and, and good food, too. And also that afternoon, attended the choose-not-to-use, um, kind of as we prep to get ready, ready for the golf outing in September. I don't want to talk about September. I want to enjoy summer right now, but we still, they're doing a lot of planning, of course, and hope to see y'all there. Um, on the 13th, had a very engaging conversation with our own Chris Harker. So much so, I missed my fish meeting that morning as well. And I wanted to go to that one, but it was just so good, I couldn't leave. Um, and then on the 14th, SCALE. And 17th last night, I was, uh, at the Prior Lake City Council where the, um, as Commissioner Wolf mentioned, became a Purple Heart City. And just FYI, I've talked to Leslie and forwarded that information on to our Veterans Office a few months ago. And that may be working its way through, uh, our, uh, community here as well in what we do. So with that, I will end my report.
Good. Thank you. Commissioner Ulrich?
Okay. On the 5th, uh, the groundbreaking and then later the Parks Tour that same day. And, uh, kind of the takeaway, I, I think for us on the Parks Tour is, what's the right balance between acquiring land within our park boundaries or opening up more of our parks? You know, at one point in the past, we, we were about, set to acquire more property and we said, hold it. Wait a minute. We've owned Spring Lake since the 70s. Let's do something there. Let's open something there. That led to lots of trails at Spring Lake and the Dog Park and a very popular amenity there. And, uh, so that's the kind of thing that happens when we say acquire more land or open things. And we, we really have, um, some neat projects that we saw, um, at Spring Lake, at Cedar Lake, and potentially at Doyle Kennefick, you know, more of a passive, uh, wood chip type trail possibility there. So we'll have to sort those out and, and weigh in. And I'm glad that the board is meeting with the Parks Advisory Commission. You know, I think if we did that twice a year, I think that would be really desirable so that we could kind of be in sync with each other and make sure we are. On the 6th, I attended the, uh, monthly Administrator meeting. Later that same day, the Transportation Committee. Then we toured Bell Plain. The 7th, the, uh, SCALE Executive Committee. And one thing happened there was I hadn't, I don't think we had approved, um, the transit, the new transit plan. We had a past transit plan that we've been working on for many, many years. And we've completed pretty much every objective within that transit plan. And we're getting this committee formed to have a new transit plan going forward. Um, and it'll have representatives from all the cities and all the jurisdictions on this transit plan, uh, committee. But we hadn't approved the money for it. And SCALE, um, it was there, uh, in the budget. I said, have we, have we really approved this? And they, and nobody could remember if they, we had it or not. So we approved it. And, uh, I mean, that was a very nice, easy, well worth that everybody, there was no debate against it because it's a very needed thing. But it, it was nice that it, it got approved with, um, everybody in consensus. So the 11th, I attended the CDA. The 12th, MICA. MICA seems to be always when the Spirit of Scott picnic is, so on. So anyhow, have to see about that. The 13th, Fish Monthly Meeting. It was quite an interactive, uh, experience. Um, we were divided into groups and based on the cars that you went to these different stations, you went through the Trail of Abuse that, you know, um, that somebody might go through, through the, through custody fight or through restraining order or through some, one of, one group ended at a funeral, you know. And it was, it was all the different possibilities. It showed you kind of firsthand of all the struggles that could go through the process of, uh, abuse that's occurring in families. It was, it was an eye-opener and a very good program. Uh, the 14th, SCALE. And after that, uh, the Regional Training Facility Board meeting. That's in a matter of fact.
All right. Thank you. Um, June 4th, after our county board meeting, we all attended a workshop on parks. On June 5th, uh, I attended a meeting with some stakeholders from both Scott and Carver Counties to talk about, um, how we may be able to do more to help victims fleeing from domestic violence. So very, um, pertinent to Commissioner Ulrich's comments about the fish presentation. Also on that day, also attended the groundbreaking and the Parks Tour and meeting with the Parks Advisory Board. Again, um, to echo Commissioner Ulrich, I think it was good to meet with the board to see the, uh, with the Advisory Board to see the issues they were dealing with, to understand what happens and what sort of discussions happen before, items get before us. Thursday, June 6th, the tour and meeting, uh, with the Bell Plain City Council. Uh, again, I think that was, was very worthwhile and, and important. On Friday, June 7th, uh, I attended a meeting of a sub, subcommittee I'm on, uh, for AMC, um, it, that includes representatives from the Association of Minnesota Counties and the Minnesota Association of County Social Services Administrators. We really dealt with, um, trying to work with the new Commissioner of Human Services, what kind of, uh, strategies and relationship we were going to have with that, followed up on some legislative items, and then spent a lot of the meeting talking about, um, the Families First Prevention Act and how that will change some things, uh, hopefully for us for, for child protection going forward. On Tuesday, June 11th, I stopped out at CAP. They had an open house coffee and conversations with the CAP staff just to, um, check in what's going on out there, how programs are going. Later that day, had the Ask Me Labor Management meeting. Um, and then the meeting with the, my monthly meeting with the county Administrator. And then finally later in the day with Commissioner Beer, attended the, a meeting with the Shakopee Mayor and City Administrator to talk about some common issues. Wednesday, June 12th, also Spirit of Scott BBQ. The Spirit of Scott Committee did a great job putting on that barbecue. Um, it's, it's not easy to plan and host an event for, for 300 to 400 people, and I think they handled it well. Um, later that day, I had the Scott County Historical Society Board meeting. We do have a, a new executive director, um, hired and in place there at that organization. Her name is Heather Hogland. Um, she seems to be jumping right in. Uh, we've obviously had to work with the Historical Society with the building project because there's some land that's attached to their land where they had a, a garage where they stored things, where, where now we'll have some parking. Um, they're also having some severe challenges with the HVAC system in that building, needing to redo the HVAC system in the, the very near future. And that's a very expensive proposition. So that board's working on, on figuring that out. And then Friday, June 14th, was the SCALE meeting. So next, we'll move on to County Administrator Update. Um, we have Deputy Administrator Danny Lent setting in, uh, sitting in for Leslie today. Do you have a report for us, Danny?
Just a couple of reminders, uh, Madam Chair. Um, first, uh, we will not be holding our typical meeting the first weekend and, first week of July. It's going to be moved to July 9th. Um, also that week on July 11th, we do have a joint meeting with the Three Rivers Park District. Um, so starting off with a busy week there. Uh, the other reminder is that we do have our Volunteer Appreciation Picnic this evening out at the Scott County Fairgrounds from 4:00 to 7:00 PM. And that is the end of my report.
Thank you.
Yep.
Good job. All right. Onto, uh, the county attorney. Do we have a, a necessity to meet, uh, for client, uh, related items?
Madam Chair, Commissioners?
Attorney-client. There we go. I'm an attorney.
Yes, I am.
Well, I should have looked.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, we do not have anything to discuss.
Thank you very much. Um, following this meeting, the board will meet in a workshop setting to receive the results of the resident survey report. Otherwise, if there's nothing else to come before us.
Motion to adjourn.
All right. So I moved in second and to adjourn this meeting. Any discussion? All in favors, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.